Hopefully, that's the way it is. Thank you.
Okay. So, did we have, have we made the correction, Mr. Clerk? In regard to Counselor Wayne's request? We've noted it?
Yeah, we noted it.
Okay.
Okay, so it now shows me as in favor.
Is that correct?
We will, in the minutes for this meeting, we will indicate your statement tonight that you're in favor of the Arts and Culture Committee as a standalone committee.
Sorry, I'm still confused. The motion that's recorded in the minutes is a motion that I am in favor of. If that, I had been told that that was the motion on the floor, I would have voted in favor. I was told the minute, the motion on the floor was worded differently. And that's why I was voting against it. So, if this is the motion that we voted on, then yes, I was in favor. I thought I was voting on another motion.
And I appreciate that, but this was the motion that was voted on, and you did vote opposed at the time. But we'll correct the minutes for this meeting, indicating that you're in favor.
Tell you what, how about we defer and you review the tape?
I don't think we need to defer it. We'll make a note that you're in favor of the Arts and Culture Committee being a standalone committee.
I think Counselor Wayne, too, you had made a reference, Counselor Wayne, in regard to combining the Museum Board and the Arts and Culture Board. I think that was, maybe we're getting a little bit of a confusion.
Yes, because to me, when I asked for clarification of the motion, and I was told that the motion was that it remain the same, that says there is no combination with any other committee or board, even if it is appropriate for them to be combined. It is that the Arts and Culture Committee stay as it is. I was looking for definitely not merger with Recreation and Culture, but merger with something else. So, I couldn't vote in favor of it staying the same. That's not what I was looking for. I did not want to oppose what's here, though. That's why I'm asking for a review of the tape and clarification.
Well, I don't need to review the tape. I've watched the tape. I know exactly what the motion is, but I appreciate the ramification, because I think the question was asked at the time, "So, what does this mean exactly?" And what it means is, the Arts and Culture Committee stay as a standalone committee. But, the original motion on the floor was exactly the motion that stated in the minutes. And as the mayor indicated, you had also said, "I'm willing to move a separate motion combining the Arts and Culture Committee with the Board of Museum," or, sorry, the Niagara Falls Museums Advisory Board. So, I fully appreciate, I know exactly what your position was on this issue, and I'm more than happy to reflect in the minutes what your position is, Counselor Wayne.
Take this motion, and I'll put another one on the floor.
Okay. Motion to receive the minutes as amended. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, Counselor Wayne?
And I will move that staff investigate combining the Arts and Culture Committee with the Museum Advisory Committee, or whatever it's called.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, do we have a seconder? Okay, the motion is defeated. Okay. All right, moving on. Ladies and gentlemen, deputations and presentations. Our first order of business is to ask Wilma Morrison to please come forward. How are you? Good to see you.
You, too.
Nice to see you. Ladies and gentlemen, turn around, come on around here, so we can see it from the camera. Wilma's a well-known lady in our community, ladies and gentlemen. We're very happy and very proud to have her here today. First time that I met Wilma was when I was going door-to-door, and then I ended up knocking on her door, and what a...
She didn't open it.
She didn't open it. She opened it, and we had a really nice conversation, and I have to say, you know, that was the luck of the draw for me that day, that I was able to meet Wilma again today. Ladies and gentlemen, for those of you that have been living under a rock, Wilma Morrison was recently honored with the Order of Ontario. She received the Order of Ontario for her lifelong dedication to preserving the significance of Black history in our community. A long supporter of Black history, ensuring many important projects evolve, such as the annual celebration of Black History Month in Niagara, the Norvell Johnson Heritage Center, the preservation of the Nathaniel Dett Memorial Church in Niagara Falls, just to name a few. Her commitment, determination, and positive attitude are a true inspiration for all of us in our community, and it gives me a lot of pleasure, and I know this doesn't hold the candle to your Order of Ontario, but it is a municipal certificate that I'd love to give to you. On behalf of the members of all the City Council, we wish our, and to extend our warmest congratulations and best wishes to Wilma Morrison, in recognition of receiving the Order of Ontario for your lifelong dedication to preserving the significance of Black history in our community. Thank you very much, Wilma. She'd like to say a few words.
Can you give me a mic?
Well, they will, your mic, right above there.
I just want to say thank you to everyone. Niagara Falls has been just so supportive for our cause. And I know that it's often said that I am a promoter of Black history. Yes, I am, because I want to, I want, I want Canada to know the contribution that we've made towards building our various communities. But I also want a Canadian history taught in the schools. We have so many people who have come into Canada and helped to build the communities. And they're not, we hear nothing about them. We hear nothing about the First Nations people. They were here before us, and they welcomed us here. They've been sorry about that ever since. The thing is that we need to press to have a Canadian history taught to our young people. And I thank you so very, very much. I mean, this sort of began, we have Counselor Thompson, Wayne Thompson, who was the mayor at the time, and did that in a swing.
I also worked with Wilma at the Health Department for many, many years.
Did he shut down? And then you have Kim Crater, who was the counselor at the time, and they've been just so, so supportive, all of you have been, and I thank you once again.
Not too often that we get a standing ovation in chambers, so congratulations, Mrs. Morrison. Next up, we would ask Liz Palmeri, Executive Director from Niagara Community Foundation, to make some comments. Welcome, Liz, and Maria Manicella.
Do I need to drop this down?
Yeah, maybe you might want to pull it forward, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to speak to you about the Niagara Community Foundation. Maria Manicella, who's one of our board members, is going to start off the presentation, and then I'm going to finish.
Mayor DiOdati, members of council, and city staff, it gives us great pleasure to come here tonight to give you an update on the activities of the Niagara Community Foundation. We will let you know more about our activities over the past year, and for our new members of council, know more about our work, both in the city and across the region. The Community Foundation was established in 2000 to link a donor's legacy to their community forever. We do this by creating endowment funds that are held in perpetuity. A portion of the earnings on each fund are granted to charities as directed by the donor on an annual basis. I want to acknowledge the vision and the leadership of the late Frank Branscombe in ensuring the early success of the foundation. It is because of Frank that we are a viable organization, working with donors and charities across Niagara. Donors have set up funds to support particular charities, to support particular fields, such as the environment, or children and youth, and to support the region-wide initiatives, or to support a particular community. Donors are now funding charities, such as the Boys and Girls Club, Project Share, and Stanford United Church through their endowments. A few years ago, the foundation became one of the main beneficiaries of the Sleep Cheap event. Thank you, Mayor DiOdati, for all your work in leading this event when you were a member of council. We use these funds to create a Niagara Falls Fund, and each year, a portion of the earnings on this endowment are used to provide grants to charities providing programs and services in the city. Other donors with Niagara Falls roots have opened funds at the foundation. Anne Louise Branscombe created a fund called the LV Vicary Fund in memory of her mother's passing. Each year, she makes an annual gift to this fund, and we use the fund's earnings to support projects across Niagara. This type of fund is what we refer to as an unrestricted, unrestricted named fund, where the donor leaves it to the foundation board to determine the beneficiaries, which is done through a very thorough and transparent grant application, review, and assessment process. Morgan Funeral Home opened a fund during the year in which they celebrated their 150th anniversary. They continue to add to the fund on an annual basis by allocating an amount from each service they provide. Each year, when we meet with Ernie Morgan and discuss possible projects to support, we know that he is interested in capital projects, which benefit the communities in which his business operates. He is currently supporting the new regional residential facility of Pathstone Mental Health, formerly the Niagara Child and Youth Services. I believe their executive director, Ellis Katzoff, recently made a presentation to your council. The type of fund created by Morgan Funeral Homes is a donor-advised fund. We also have almost 20 charities that have created an endowment fund with the foundation, including Niagara Falls Humane Society, Niagara Falls Big Brothers Big Sisters, and Women's Place of Southern Niagara. We are now at a bittersweet time in our history. When we opened our doors back in 2000, we had no relationship with any donors in Niagara. We were just a good idea waiting to come to life. Well, 10 years later, we are now seeing some of those people with whom we've developed a relationship with unfortunately pass away. That is the bitter part. However, what we're now seeing is that we are starting to receive bequests to support those charities important to our donors during their lifetime, and these tend to be larger gifts. We recently celebrated our 10th anniversary year, having raised in excess of $18 million, held in more than 160 different endowment funds. During that time, more than $3 million has been granted to local charities. What is important for you to understand is that the donations to these funds are never spent. The capital is held forever. It is just a portion of the earnings that are dispersed annually, either as directed by the donor, or through a variety of granting programs. I'm now going to invite Liz Palmeri, our Executive Director, to describe our various granting programs.
Thanks, Maria. The foundation has five granting programs that are open to registered charities and municipalities. Have to pardon my voice, I sound kind of like squeaky or spanky from our gang. It's just a touch of laryngitis. The deadlines and specific criteria are on our website. But I need to reiterate to council that these are special project grants, and they are very small grants. We do not fund ongoing operating costs for charities, and they tend to be in the range of $2,000 to $11,000 grants. So, just, I understand that there's presentations later on with regards to the city's discretionary granting program. I think I just needed to reiterate to council that the grants that come from the endowment funds are really very small, and tend to be special project grants. We have an environmental grants program, and it's available for community-based projects, and also municipalities, so I think you may want to hear how municipalities can get some money from us. They tend to be water-related, so shoreline restoration, water quality improvement, improve aquatic habitats, establish and improve rural and urban space, tree planting, urban canopies, and provide education and awareness for the above-listed priorities. Earlier this year, we made a $2,400 grant to the Heartland Forest Nature Experience to develop a curriculum for aquatic habitats for fish and wildlife for all four seasons, and prepare adaptations for special needs programming. We also awarded a $5,000 grant to the City of Niagara Falls Parks in the City Committee for a restoration naturalization project with local community groups to establish and expand a buffer along the existing stream that passes through Patrick Cummings Park. The buffer will reduce harmful erosion and silting of the stream. We have a children's summer camp grant program, and we have two types of grants that we make available to community groups. Some of the grants are to provide bursaries for children in financial need to attend camp, and also grants for caregivers to attend camp with special needs children. The YMCA of Niagara Salvation Army and FACS have benefited from this program for a number of years. We have a general community grants program. It's also an annual program, and is available to registered charities and community groups, working also with the local municipality. I think when you folks had your 100th anniversary a few years ago, we put money into that beautiful celebration book that was published about the city of Niagara Falls. We did something similar when the City of Welland celebrated their 150th anniversary. From my perspective, it's a great way to sort of see a city's growth and development in a very quick method. Our largest grant last year was to Pathstone Mental Health for the work that they are doing with a new center there, that they are building or renovating on Thorold Stone Road. That grant was almost $11,000, and it was for kitchen and laundry equipment for that new residential service. And the year before last, we gave a grant to the YWCA, and I see Elizabeth is here, a $7,000 grant towards the purchase of security cameras and furniture for the renovation of the Culp Street Shelter that they have. We have a little $500 mini-grant program, which I have to say is one of our favorite programs, because it's a really quick turnaround time. We can, it's about a 45-day turnaround time, all the assessments are done electronically. And again, these are for very special projects that an organization may have need for. Project Share received a small grant last year to produce, purchase, excuse me, reusable shopping bags for their clients. And we supported the Hope Furniture Bank to purchase a vacuum cleaner and shop vac for cleaning donated equipment. And our final granting program is a program that's focused on youth, and they are to, for initiatives to assist organizations with young people. And it's interesting, this program is all funded by the Branscombe Family Foundation. They make a non-endowed gift to us, they're smaller grants, they tend to deal with much larger grants to community groups for capital projects. But we're receiving a number of small grants, so they asked us to basically administer this small grants program for them. It's about $50,000 that they receive, we receive from them. We put some into the summer camp program, and about $42,000 goes into the youth granting program. We're only able to support registered charities or municipalities who have committees of council that are doing sort of community-based work. And in closing, I want to make three requests, or we want to make three requests, and none of them involve money. So, we want to know if we can put you on a grant notification deadline. We publish about three or four times a year an announcement to say the upcoming grants that are available, and what the deadlines are. You, in turn, can share that with your constituents to let folks know about the opportunities to receive funding from the foundation. We want to know if we can add you to our regular mailing list. I snuck around before you came in and put 2009 Annual Report on all your desks. The 2010 one will be coming out in a couple of months. That's the only publication that we mail, and so we would like to send that to you, just so you can see what we're doing, who's doing what in your community. You'll see the list in there of all the charities, both from our donor funds and from the granting programs. And the last request is if you see an opportunity in your community where a resident talks about leaving some kind of legacy to the community, we don't want to take away from the annual operating support, or the capital campaigns that the charities are doing, but to have an endowment that provides an ongoing support, whether it's big or small, to a charity. We sit on the Board of Course Niagara, and we have an endowment fund, and to get that grant of $4,000 or $5,000 a year, for us, it's one less fundraiser that we have to do. So, it's a really great tool and a resource to help our organization. But for the charities, if you hear of somebody that wants to leave some type of legacy to their community, send them to our website, or have them give us a call. We'd love to talk to them about how we can continue to support those charities that have been important to them during their lifetime through an endowment at the foundation. So, thank you very much, and if you have any questions, Maria and I would be able to share them.
Well, Liz, thank you very much, you and Maria, for being here today. And I should let you know, too, we've been a little bit behind this year in our collecting our Sleep Cheap checks. Matter of fact, three of them arrived today. So, we're getting closer. It's been because of the election and all the different activities going on, we've been a little bit delayed, but we're just about there. I think we're only one or two outstanding, so we can finally move forward with that. And what they do, for, you know, those of you, I'm sure everyone knows, that it's a good opportunity to invest money into a charitable group that will then put the money, and then the dividends will pay out to the community. So, it's a perpetual kind of gift-giving situation, and that's the nice thing about it. It's not just eat for today, it's eat for tomorrow. It's a real great approach for the region, real proactive. Were there any other members of council that had any questions or comments for Ms. Palmeri? Yes, Counselor Wayne?
The request to put us on the mailing list, is that individual council members, or council as a whole? I think council, generic council email address should be good. And I'd really prefer to get my copy in electronic format. It saves a few trees, saves postage, and then I know where it's filed.
So, I guess that's a yes? We definitely would like to have... Yep, so our clerk is going to send you the information, and this way we'll all be able to receive your notifications. That'd be great.
Thank you, Ms. Wayne.
Thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we've got the Mayor's Youth Advisory, and I would ask Erin Bailey and Yashvi Shah to come forward and present to our group.
First off, I just want to start by thanking Mayor Jim DiOdati and the rest of council for listening to us today. What we're looking to speak about today is our support of the recent RFP that went out seeking multi-pad street receptacles on the streets of Niagara Falls in addition to litter receptacles.
The problem that the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee has chosen to address during this term is something that we've all noticed as a whole. The city does lack recycling programs on the streets. There are garbage cans present, but they're very difficult to notice. When they're attached to the lamppost, they're same color, they're very small, and it is difficult to notice them. Receptacles are too far, and they're not very many in between. Garbage is not being thrown out into the cans, although there are receptacles present, because some people don't notice them, or they're too far. Garbage gets thrown on the street, and it's just litter. Garbage that is disposed of is mixed in with the recyclables. My fellow committee members, Shelby Levesque and James Dixon, will give you a visual of just how much of our garbage is filled with recyclables, and just how much of it is actually garbage. So, Shelby and James, if you wanted to come up?
So, Carrie Campbell and Yashvi Shah went to a garbage receptacle on Lundys Lane. This here was all the recycling found in the garbage receptacle, and this was the actual garbage. So, you can see that the garbage receptacles are mainly an outlet to put recyclable items, and that doesn't have to be.
So, there is no place to dispose of these recyclables separately, actually, on the streets. As you can see, that includes cans, that includes plastic bottles, cardboard, various other recyclables that the city does not need to be disposing of in landfills. Just some facts, based on the fall 2010 waste audit results, there were 1.02 kilogram per week of recyclables actually found in the garbage stream. This equates to approximately 8,429 tons remaining in the garbage stream annually. In terms of cost to landfill this material, the Niagara region charges local municipalities, such as Niagara Falls, a uniform disposal rate of $92.25 per ton. Based on the UDR, it is estimated that the cost to landfill, around 9,133 tons of recyclables annually, is close to $1 million, $777,575.
It's estimated that approximately $313,390 is in net revenue. That much is lost annually due to these receptacles, or these recyclables ending up in landfill. Like you saw, almost 75 to 80% is recyclable, and that doesn't need to go into our landfills. The city has approximately 165 on-street. Obviously, they're not being used, and depending on the time of year, they are emptied daily or weekly. Depending on the location, pickup is taken care of by the regional contractor, Antera, or by city forces.
Again, just viewing by our visual here, if you were to extrapolate that to 165 on-street litter receptacles, this was just from one single receptacle on Lundys Lane. So, imagine that much recyclable material throughout the entire city in our garbage receptacles on the streets. The city does pay $130 per receptacle per year for maintenance and pickup. An additional $130, based on a quote, would be added to maintenance and pickup costs, with the inclusion of on-street recycling, for a total of roughly $260 per receptacle per year. This is just a bit of a visual diagram showing the downward progress of the lack of a street recycling program in the city. With the lack of street recycling, the recyclables are mixed in with garbage. These recyclables are transported to landfill at the cost of the city, and non-biodegradable materials that are found in recyclables, they build up in these landfills. This leads to cost incurrence for waste management for the city of Niagara Falls.
And as the committee traveled around the city, we did notice that there was a lot of recyclables within the receptacles themselves, but litter also on the streets, on streets that are very frequently visited by tourists. And I know at Mayor Jim DiOdati's State of the City address, he talked about making Niagara a brand. And when tourists see that litter, that see that recycling in the receptacles, that taints our brand, that taints our beauty, and our beauty of Niagara is lost at that point.
Some of our goals, as a committee, we'd like to see the replacement of all existing on-street garbage receptacles with multi-pad containers over the next five years through the contract that's coming out from the RFP. As a committee, we'd also look to influence the adoption of these similar street recycling programs within the various BIAs across the city, and also continue promotion and education about eco-conscious actions within the city, specifically the school systems, the high schools in Niagara.
So, in terms of taking real action, we hope to support council's decision to adopt street recycling programs by raising awareness among the youth, like Erin mentioned, through our schools, through our communities, and through the organizations that we're involved in. We hope to encourage the BIAs to adopt similar programs through presentations in partnership with the Park and the City Committee, and we hope to highlight areas of need around the city through presentations like this, and similar presentations to the BIAs, because we do believe this is significant, especially for our generation, for future generations, and for the real beauty of Niagara Falls.
There are just some areas of need, specifically near the high schools, that we've came up with as a subcommittee discussing this topic. Highlighted in maroon there, there are areas near St. Michael Catholic High School, McLeod Road between St. Michael and DaVinci's Pizza, a restaurant frequented by lunch, for lunch by those students along that path. Quite a lot of litter, there is no receptacle actually between the school and the restaurant, and a lot of the litter ends up in the gutter beside, or on the grass beside the sidewalk. In blue, we have schools near St. Paul Catholic High School, Thorold Stone in Dorchester, the corner there, as well as Montrose and Thorold Stone, again, near fast-food restaurants that the students frequent for lunch. In orange, we have Stanford Collegiate, Drummond and Lundys Lane, as well Lundys Lane by the fast-food restaurants. That does fall under the Lundys Lane BIAs, so that would be one of those areas that we'd be looking to approach the BIA specifically to encourage their adoption of street recycling.
Near West Lane on Lundys and Montrose, that major intersection, again, all of these locations that we've outlined are always surrounded by fast-food places, and that's what we find is the most critical problem. And of course, the West Lane entrance, right by Lundys Lane, there is one receptacle there, but I have yet to see more garbage in the receptacle than there is around it. On the five corners, by A&amp;Meyer, again, a very frequently visited place by students, Hartford Green Plaza with Pizza Pizza, restaurant litter that very easily could be taken care of.
In white, we have highlighted three outside of areas near schools that we believe would be high-traffic areas. Dorchester by the Optimist Club, near Bridge and Victoria, down by the bus and train station, and Comington Square and Shipewa. A bit of a visual here as well, just a map of Niagara Falls lined. In the green diamonds encapsulated by the white circles are the positions that we suggest for adoption of street recycling near the high schools. As you can see in the bottom left, we have St. Michael Catholic, we have West Lane Secondary on Lundys Lane, Stanford Collegiate at Lundys and Drummond, and St. Paul and Meyer are north-end schools at the north end of the city. And then, circled by green, are the three outside of the school districts that we'd like to recommend as high-traffic areas, where a street recycling program would be necessary. At this time, I'd like to welcome Frank from the Park and the City Committee. He just wants to speak on behalf of the Park and the City Committee in support of our initiative here, so.
Welcome, Frank.
Good evening. I'm from the Park and the City Committee, and I don't think we really need to hear too much more. The, I think the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee's report speaks for itself, but I would like to say that they did present to our committee as well, to the Park and the City Committee, and we fully endorse the efforts that the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee are suggesting here. We think that it's completely consistent with some of the other efforts that they have initiated with the reduction of plastic waste through eliminating, eliminating the non-reusable plastic water bottles and other beverage containers. So, we're completely in favor of this particular measure, and a number of members of our committee are here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Again, we just want to thank you for actually listening to our proposal on behalf of the Mayor's Youth and the Park and the City Committee. We hope that you will take our advice and just know, begin to realize the problem that is plaguing the streets of Niagara.
Erin and Yashvi, oh, I'm sorry, did you have more, Yashvi?
Oh, no, I was just going to say that there were any questions, Erin and I would be more than willing to...
We do have some councils that do want to ask you some questions, and I just want to point out to council and everyone in the gallery, what an incredible, incredibly active Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee that we have. They're very progressive, they're very proactive, they just had a... very proactive. They just had a forum on Saturday afternoon at the McBain Center. They're continually being recognized throughout the community for their academia, for all sorts of involvement in our community. The only thing I made, I made them all promise that when they're done, they're college and university, that they'll consider coming back, because we can't afford to bleed this kind of talent to other communities. They've taken ownership in our community, even at the Optimist Youth Awards. You know, they are recognized again just continuously. And I thought I was pretty active in school, and it had me wondering what I did all through my high school years. So, a pretty incredible bunch, and credible as well. As you can see, they do their research, they don't just throw crazy ideas out there and see what sticks. And Kerry Campbell, our liaison to the Mayor's Advisory Committee, lets me know how much debating goes on, that they don't just take an idea and say, "Great, let's send it to City Council." They debate the ideas, and they make sure that they're credible ideas, and they first have to vet them before they bring them to us. We're really lucky to have such an incredible group. So first up, we've got Counselor Peter Angel that would like to make comment.
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship, and I don't really think that I have any questions for MYAC, but I do want to thank both Erin and Yashvi for coming here tonight and speaking also to Frank. I think it's a great presentation, and like you said, we should be thankful that we have a committee like this that brings ideas forward. And every time MYAC brings something forward, it's usually a good idea. I know even in my own home, I think I have more recycling than I actually have garbage, so it really only makes sense to have multi-unit receptacles at every, or everywhere that we have the garbage. And I just wanted to know, Your Worship, through you, to, I guess, Erin and Yashvi, whether or not you're already working with a staff member to implement the locations that you had there in the screen.
We haven't actually worked directly with anybody. We would be the first step, presenting to council and just advising yourselves on the locations. We do have record of them all, however, and we'd be willing to draft up any sort of a proposal or something like that, advising City Council formally about the locations.
Your Worship, if they're looking for direction to be able to work with staff, then I would promote that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Peter Angel, seconded by Counselor Gates. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Wing?
Yes, I was going to move a similar motion. I, first of all, wanted to second your comments. I had the pleasure of getting to know some of your predecessors through the Park in the City, and they were simply amazing people, just amazing. And I'd like to compliment the Mayor-presented members for their initiative and your research and your presentation. It was excellent. My motion was going to be that we refer this to staff for a report on implementing the suggestions. I think they have a very positive net benefit. And also, when there are dedicated slots, like in the presentation, then you can get around the problem, which I see occasionally, of people taking bags of household garbage and just dumping them in the top of an open, open-top municipal garbage container. It's very hard to stuff it all in that way, so it'll help that problem as well. So, thank you.
I just want to actually make a quick comment. We have actually met with Paul Brown from the city. He was, he had actually some information on the RFP that went out, and showed us some of the contractors' manual basically for their plans for the city and the different options that we have. The receptacles are very, very nice-looking, noticeable on the streets as opposed to the gray bins that seem to blend in with the poles. And again, they aren't open-topped, many of the designs, so it would cut down on that problem. They can be locked, very secure, very, very good for the city.
That's great. Any other comment before I call the vote? All those in favor, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And for our next order of business, I would ask the clerk to make the introduction.
Your Worship, next on the agenda is actually sort of twofold. One is a presentation that you'll be making shortly to representatives or representative from Coyote Watch Canada, but also there's, the other part of this is for council to pass an anti-feeding bylaw. As many of you know, back in December, there was a lot of media coverage about coyotes in our community, and Your Worship went into action immediately, and there was a meeting that was called that included Counselor Wing, member Kim Crater, who was here earlier, representatives from the Ministry of Natural Resources, Niagara Regional Police, the Parks Commission, the Parks Police, Humane Society, and appropriate city staff, and Coyote Watch Canada, which is a volunteer organization. And from that, a number of action plan was put in place. One step was obviously public information and public education. A number of press releases were sent out through your office, Your Worship, I think three in total to date, and possibly more in the future. We also set up sites where people could log when they'd seen a coyote in the community. And actually, this was a very adventurous venture, because I think it allowed a couple of things. Number one, it allowed us to really focus and locate where coyotes were in our community, and for the most part, they were found in areas you'd expect to find them, hydro corridors, et cetera. But when problem areas and what sort of problems may be in those areas that led to coyotes. And what we found were, you know, possibility that coyotes were being moved from locations due to construction, due to snowmobilers during the winter, but also because there was a food source for them to go to. And that then led to our next step, which was through my guys in bylaw enforcement, where we basically just sent a notice to surrounding properties indicating that they shouldn't be leaving out foodstuffs that could be an attractant to these coyotes. And so far, that's proven successful, the public education, et cetera. But one other step that it was agreed to would be important, would be for the city to enact an anti-feeding bylaw. And Mr. Beaman quickly got together and drafted, I think, a very appropriate, easy-to-read, easy-to-implement bylaw, which although we may never have to resort to actually laying charges on it, it's another good tool in our bylaw enforcement toolkit, and it also allows, I think, a strong deterrent. If we find problem areas in the future, we can send them a copy of the bylaw and indicate that, you know, you could be charged under this bylaw. But I think the process was greatly helped by the volunteers with Coyote Watch Canada, and I guess on that point, I'll hand it over to you, Your Worship, and you can make the appropriate presentation. And then after the appropriate presentation, we'd ask that council consider the report and pass the bylaw.
It's a tight fit best here. If I could call Leslie Sampson, if please come forward. Thank you, been here. Leslie Sampson is part of our Coyote Watch Canada. I can ask her to say a few words in a moment, but it was Leslie Sampson and Jim Brown that came forward when they realized that we had a coyote problem. And, you know, some people laughed about it and made light of it. Other people were terrified and didn't know how to react. And ultimately, it comes down to some education, which I was educated on the situation. It comes to some awareness, and before you know it, we were able to deal with the problem, but not without the expertise of Leslie. Wasn't until Leslie came forward, and this woman is forgotten more than most people know about coyotes and wildlife. And when you hear her story, and I know Counselor Wing's got some comment as well, but this woman, I mean, tracks through the bush, she has run-ins with farmers, she's like an Erin Brockovic of the wild, you know, crossbred with grizzly atoms. She's kind of a combination. But an incredible lady, and even the ministry appreciated her expertise, as she helped us to deal with the challenges that we had with the coyotes in the community. And the best part of all, it didn't cost us any money. And for that alone, we have to give her a big hand, please. Leslie invested countless hundreds of hours tracking the coyotes, meeting with the residents, finding out where the problems were, educating the people, and letting them know some people innocently were doing the wrong things, that were bringing coyotes into our community. And she spent the time tracking down all of our leads through the city's website, through our clerk's department. It was a lot of work, it was a real collaborative effort, but the end result has been very, very successful. And I would just like to present to Leslie, and we also have a gift for Jim Brown, the other part of Coyote Watch Canada, with a small token of our appreciation. This is for you, Leslie, and a certificate that I'd like to read. These are really tricky openings. Coyote-proof, these certificates. On behalf of the members of City Council and the residents of Niagara Falls, it gives me great pleasure to recognize Leslie Sampson, Coyote Watch Canada, for your enthusiastic efforts to preserve and protect wildlife and to educate the public about coyotes in order to promote living in harmony with wildlife in Niagara Falls. Congratulations.
Just on behalf of Jim Brown, co-founder of Coyote Watch Canada, myself, and the organization itself, I would like to thank Mayor DiO'dati, members of council, and city staff for inviting us here today. It's been just a great process working with the city of Niagara Falls, the residents, everybody from the Humane Society, from the Parks Commission, Parks Police, right through to just ordinary citizens have embraced the process. And first and foremost, I think as far as, you know, Mayor DiO'dati moving from a short-term plan into the long-term plan, implementing that documentation, the sites involving the community as community scientists, that input is valuable, and moving forward, it's crucial in order to keep that education level accurate. The Niagara Falls review in assimilating and putting out that springtime celebration alert is paramount in providing that education for the public. And we look forward to, it's been our honor, and we look forward to moving into the future to continue the citing reports, to analyze, to observe, to be ready and available for the public if, in fact, we do experience any concerns. We're more than willing to, you know, step up to the plate and do that. We also commend the development of this bylaw. It is crucial. We do endorse it 100%. The number-one key component, and it's keystone in keeping communities safe while allowing the public to celebrate the diversity of wildlife is to keep the wildlife wild. And the number-one key attractant is the feeding. And once that education is out there and people appreciate and realize what to expect, I think it's just, it's a fantastic initiative, and we look forward to continuing our relationship, our work relationship.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Counselor Wing, you had a comment?
I just wanted to move the recommendation and note that we were very lucky that when you called the stakeholders meeting, it included the MNR and Jim Leslie of Coyote Watch. And really, the contents of this report, the bylaw, and our continued educational efforts are really the best avenue we have, and it's a matter of learning to safely coexist with the wildlife in our midst. So I'll move the recommendation.
Moved by Counselor Wing, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Any other discussion? Counselor Mace?
I don't know whether it's been already corrected or not, but in the coyote information, on the back of the, it says a lone pup usually has a pup close by. I think that should say parent or...
Yes.
Somebody please check that.
Okay, with the friendly amendment to the good eyes, Counselor Mace? Hey, any other comment? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you. And just before we move on to, there was one, last week were the Paul Harris Awards with the Rotary, and I understand that there was one award that was left in our office in air and wasn't brought to the actual awards for Carol May Maidens, and she happens to be in the gallery, so I'm just going to first thing deliver this to you, Carol May. Congratulations. All right. Okay, moving on to planning matters, we're going to go to our CAO for our first matter on the agenda. Are we getting, pardon me? Okay, no, you know what, we're going to change. We're going to go to our Director of Planning, Mr. Hrlavich.
Thank you, Your Worship. This report involves a street name change, somewhat of a different matter than planning usually brings forward to council, but they do fall under the auspices of the Planning Department. This is a matter that's actually dragged on, and I'm embarrassed to say, for almost nine years. 2002, we received a request to change the name of Robert Street between Stanley Avenue-Victoria, and that continues as Newman Hill down the moraine into Queen Victoria Park at the Customs Plaza for the Rainbow Bridge. And so the proposal or the request was to change all of the name of that portion of Robertson Newman Hill to Falls Avenue. The, part of the delay were a number of things. There are actually three jurisdictions of roads here, so in actual fact, we have the Niagara Parks Commission, we have City Street, and we have Regional Street all involved in this as well. We're waiting for the region to take some of the leadership. Finally, about a year ago, we learned that they were passing the torch to the city to take charge of this, as well, it passed around the municipality as well. Part of the efforts to rename of Robert Street comes from the initiative by the province, the region, and the city to create Robert Street as a gateway, a park-like setting, an entrance into Queen Victoria Park and our tourist core. The, between the province and the region, and most of the properties, residential dwellings on Robert Street were acquired. Most of the landscape setting that you see there today was then developed with the Niagara Parks Commission. There are actually six, or five properties, four owners on, sorry, five owners, six properties on Robert Street that still remain with municipal addresses on Roberts. As well, there's a one property on Falls Avenue between Bender Hill and John. So in actual fact, Falls Avenue right now extends from the Niagara Parkway down by the Maid of the Mist Plaza, extends all the way through into John Street. It's cut off by the barricade down the middle of the road, Newman Hill, in front of the Customs Plaza. So in fact, Falls Avenue is discontinuous, so that the request to change Robert, or the name to Falls Avenue would extend all the way from Queen Victoria Park, past the hotels on Falls Avenue now, up Newman Hill, and across Robert Street, and would form the new entranceway as visitors are arriving into the city from the 420 and find themselves at Stanley Avenue. The city staff is recommending support for the street name change, because it does reflect that gateway change. However, the, a number of residents that still occupy the dwellings on Roberts are opposed. They're opposed because the, of the amount of work that would have to be undertaken in order to change addresses with their various mail that they receive, their friends and relatives, and the associated costs with that. The, in checking with emergency services, they didn't have any issue with the street name change. In checking with Canada Post, they had no issues as well. They delivered by postal code, so whether the street was Robert Street or whether the street is Falls Avenue, they will deliver the mail to those properties. The, in making that change, and because there is a break physically between Falls Avenue east and west, or north and south of Bender Street, we're recommending that Falls Avenue north of Bender Street also be changed. There's one property or one dwelling or building on that property is owned by Michael Zinn at the corner of Falls and Hiram. We did contact the owners of Michael Zinn. They too don't support the name change, but felt that if they had to accept the name change, then they would like the name changed with, as long as the name Falls remained in the street name. Therefore, we were recommending that that portion of Falls Avenue between the Customs Plaza or Bender Street and John Street would be renamed North Falls Avenue, and then Falls Avenue would be everything from Queen Victoria Park to Stanley Avenue. So as I say, Planning Department is supportive of the change. We didn't receive any objections from the emergency services, the post office, the typical places that might have an objection. And that's basically our recommendation. I know there are people here in the audience tonight who have a, an interest, and I know that there isn't, might need, might need a motion from council to allow them to speak.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hrlavich. Since this is not a planning, not a public meeting under the Planning Act, we won't need to do that formality, but anybody here will have an opportunity to make a brief comment. Counselor Thompson?
I would move they'd be given the opportunity to speak before we can make a comment.
I would move they be given the opportunity to speak before we can make a comment.
Okay. So we've got a motion by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Wayne. All those in favor? Okay. Thank you. All right. Do we have anyone that would like to speak to the matter before us tonight? Okay, sure. Mr. Burrell, if you'd like to come forward. Can I see a show of hands how many people are planning to speak tonight to the matter? Please, one, two, three more people. Okay, great.
Your worship, members of council, thank you for letting me have the opportunity to speak to you tonight on the subject.
Please state your name, please, I'm sorry, and who you represent when you're here.
My name is Doug Burrell. I'm with Canadian Niagara Hotels and Entertainment. And as Mr. Hrlavich stated in his report, in 2002, actually, an initiative was created between the province, the region, the city, and the Niagara Parks Commission to turn Robert Street into a park-like gateway, literally bringing, bringing the park into the city, totally synergistic with what the Park in the City Committee is doing and many municipalities around the world are trying to do. Then in 2003, as part of this initiative, the city received a request to change the name of Robert Street to Falls Avenue. So it's not a new idea. Niagara Falls is known as the world's most famous address, so this strip of road now designated as the gateway entrance would bear this world-famous name Falls, Falls Avenue. Being that this strip of road is the entrance or segue into the park, we believe that the nomenclature should reflect this with the suggestion of renaming Robert Street to Falls Avenue. So for the 12 to 14 million visitors who travel to Niagara each year, of which 86% come by their own car, this name change reflects the look and feel that all of the parties envisioned when they collaborated on this project. And it tells the guest he must be on the right route to see the Falls if he's on Falls Avenue. So Falls Avenue is already a recognized part of this gateway into the Niagara Parks Commission. So this would eliminate the confusion of having three different names for a one-half kilometer strip between the 420, what is now Robert Street, and what is now Falls Avenue, to just Falls Avenue for simplicity, when this extends to the Rainbow Bridge and to the Niagara Parks Commission. We checked with the postmaster's office, and Canada Post assured us that this should be seamless for any of the residents in that area as the postal codes do not change. So they would continue to get mail as they have always. I'll be here to respond to any other questions or anything that comes up from anybody else.
Any members of council, any questions for Mr. Burrell? Okay, thank you. Okay, we've got someone else interested in approaching and discussing this. Come forward, please. Yep, yep, come on up, please. You can just state your name, please, and your address.
My name is Joe Fortino, and I live on 5168 Robert Street. I, Joe Fortino, have come here to state my opposition to the proposal name change of Robert Street. I have several value reason why I'm against this change, and I will clearly lay them out for all of yous. The letter you sent me stated that there is no historical reason why you shouldn't change the name Robert Street. There may not be history to all of yous, but I lived on Robert Street most of my life. My parents, who were both hard-working immigrants, lived in my house and raised a large family with a business that my father ran out of my house. That may not mean a lot to all of yous, but it does to me. My family grew up on Robert Street, not Falls Avenue. The name Robert Street has very important meaning to me and other member of my family. There's history there. It was stated in a letter that this change will benefit the economy in Niagara Falls. Who will this benefit? It don't, I don't think it would benefit me. I will need, I will need to spend time and money to change my address and various institution. My handicap brother lives with me, will have to do the same, and because of our opposite schedule, he will have to find his own transportation to do so. Most people use GPS to travel. Changing the name of Robert Street is unnecessary. The resident of Robert Street, like myself, and not, like myself, have been put through enough. We have endured the unnecessary construction that has bottlenecked Robert Street and created more hazard for commuters with a large median in the middle of the road. We have lived through the rumor that would, that we would be expropriated from our homes because of the important gateway that needed to be built. We have also opposed an unnecessary zoning of Roberts, which again leaves me bewildered on why we are such a focus point for city. Now you wish to rename our street so that it can benefit a select group of stakeholder at the expense of the resident that have lived and paid taxes on the street most of their life. In conclude, this change is unnecessary, costly, and unwanted by me and other neighbors. We would like to live in our home free from any aggressor from the city of Niagara Falls. It seems that every year the city comes up with a new way to try and change something that causes me to take time out of my personal life and come here and defend unnecessary changes to my property. Please have some respect and concern for the resident of Robert Street. We have been good citizen to the city and wish nothing but to live in our home without disturbance. We love our neighborhood and our street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fortino. Were there any questions for Mr. Fortino from the council? Okay, thank you very much, sir. Please state your name and your address, sir.
My name is Anthony Valeri. I go by Tony. I live at 5209 Robert Street. I'm here to oppose the change of Robert Street to Falls Avenue for a number of reasons. One of them mainly is money. To change our personal information to a new address is not a simple walk to the License Bureau or the bank. We have land deeds, wills, and passports to change, and these are legal documents. Legal documents, you need a lawyer to change them, and lawyers like to be paid. One misprint puts a legal document void, you know, and so I have to carry on and straighten it all out. Also, I have four vehicles, including trailers, insurances. I have relatives on the East Coast and friends on the East Coast. I have to notify them about my changes. And I also have old friends somewhere on the West Coast, and maybe they go ahead and look me up, how they gonna find me if there's a change. This is just another form of harassment which we've been enduring for the past number of Little history on how the project started. In your letters you sent us about Robert Street, if you're interested in selling your home, call us. To me, that was voluntary if we wanted to sell our homes. I choose to say and the harassment started. In the Niagara Falls Review, at one time, it was written, "We have expropriation," talking about harassment. In Wednesday, the 23rd of April, 2003, the title in the paper was "Robert Street Expropriation Approved by the Region." And Wednesday, 17th of December, 2003, the title in the paper was "Gateway Project Expropriates Three Properties on Robert Street." 5030, 5032, which was a duplex, 5086 was an apartment building, and 5248, which was an empty house. That, that empty house is still there. It holds up a sign. And then, the write-up in the paper on Saturday, the 21st of October, 2006, one paragraph read, I'll read it word for word. "In fact," said the city CAO, John McDonald, "the last time the city expropriated property was 20 years ago to create drainage in the Shriners Creek area and wind the Palmer Avenue, you know, road there." So therefore, what do you mean by expropriation? That's the question on my mind.
Excuse me, sir, maybe we'll get an answer to that question from our clerk on the expropriation?
Well, Wayne can speak to it, obviously, but the fact of the matter was, the project, the gateway project, the region negotiated with property owners there. They were free negotiations. There wasn't any expropriation that was done, and the region has no intention of expropriating any of the remaining homes.
Counsel Thompson, did you want to add to that?
I'm gonna hold my remarks till later, but I've heard expropriation too many times here. And this all didn't happen in the last nine years. This started in 1996 with the opening of the Casino Niagara. And at that particular time, there was so much traffic on the street because of the success of the casino at that particular time, that we had petitions from the residents up and down Robert Street to do something about the traffic, or turn it over, rezone it to commercial, or else buy them out. As a result, we referred the matter to our staff, who came back and said, if there's an opportunity to work with the region, the Parks Commission, and the city to buy up the properties, and you, you have to go back to 1996 and look at what Robert Street looked at at that particular time. There were, most of them had been bought up by the Department of Highways, who were going to expand the roadway. So most of them were derelict properties, most of them were rental or vacant and in very bad condition. And the city thought it was an opportunity to clean up Robert Street and make it acceptable to an entrance into the, one of the wonders of the world, Niagara Falls. And as a result, the thing that we said consistently, and I was involved, was there will be no expropriation. And that's why these people are here today. Mr. Fortino, who I know his family very well, several other ones, my friend over here from the fire department. They were asked if they wanted to sell their property. They were all appraised, they were given 10 or more percentage than the value of their homes offered. All of them sold out without expropriation, with the exception of the several houses that are left, five of them or whatever. And as a result, the Parks Commission agreed to maintain the property, and we now have a suitable gateway into the city. And at that particular time, the request was made, why not make this Falls Avenue? Because it ties in with the Falls, it ties in with, with our master plan for tourism, and that's what it's all about. But at no time was anybody ever threatened or told that there was going to be expropriation. That was the prime objective. And as a result, all of those houses, except the four or five, whatever, were purchased in agreements that were agreed to between the property owners. So this is, this is, nobody has been threatened, or nobody has said that there was gonna be expropriation any time that I'd ever heard.
Hey, Mr. Valeri, so at least you know, in terms of the expropriation, that's not on the table here tonight, just the name change.
Okay, okay.
Is there anything else you want to add?
But that was in the paper, though. Okay, back to Robert Street now. Well, Robert Street, you know, to change the name, it doesn't fit the geometry. You know, streets run east and west, like Stanford Street and Kishner Street on either side of Robert Street. Falls Avenue, if you make that Falls Avenue, it doesn't run east and west because the avenues run north and south. The, you know, and then it carries on down into, down to Newman Hill, and then into Falls Avenue, which runs parallel with Victoria Avenue. So I can't see the geometry would match the avenues and streets. And the property owners on 5248, nobody lives there. And in 5600, it doesn't affect them any, like it affects us. We have to come up with all these here changes in our legal documents, and it's gonna cost us quite a bit.
Well, I don't know, maybe we can get an answer. Have we addressed or looked into the expenses of changing addresses of any of the residents, Mr. Hrlavich? Has that been addressed at any point?
We didn't look into that. That really is an individual-by-individual situation. There would be some people who would have property ownership, but some people who are tenants, some people who have driver's licenses, some people who do not. You know, so it's as long as it is wide. So no, we didn't look into specific costs.
Okay, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Valeri. And I think we had, there was someone else, yep? Come on forward, sir. If you could state your name and your address, please.
My name is Bob Wilson. I live at 4869 Robert Street. I spent 30 years working for the city Niagara Falls Fire Department. I've lived there since 1986. We talk about communication. At no time did anyone from the region or the city council approach me personally or my wife to talk about this situation. I returned back to this city on Sunday, being away for a two-week stay with my family. I received this letter from the city clerk in the mail. It was too late for me to get down here and get a three-page report, so I called the city clerk's office to see if I could speak this morning. I don't know if you're aware, or this evening I should say, that in 1969, February the 4th, the official bylaw of this city is to name that street Rainbow Bridge Freeway. It's still on your bylaws today, sir. The city gave up taxes on 40 homes, two motels, a five-story apartment building, and a restaurant to create the gateway. We have the mess of the four, what I call the four-way highway, we still have the mess of the two going, two roads going down into the park, and that's bedlam all the time. Personally, who's gonna pay for my, all my property deeds to notify my family in Dubai, in Scotland, in England, out west? Who's gonna pay for all my legal deeds, my business cards, my wife's business cards? The one gentleman that we had the business, the meeting with, with the city solicitor downstairs in room four, one gentleman says, "Well, we have to change the name, quote, 'to coincide with the rest of the tourist industry.'" That gentleman does not live at that house. That's only used for a tourist establishment sign. The four of us, and the other lady couldn't be here because she is sick. But to change the name, and we still have the land post, which was, with Queen Elizabeth on him, when the region did their study on that, I was involved in it because there are two sets of plans for Robert Street. So I got the first set and the second set. Everything that's been in the paper concerning Robert Street up until tonight, I have, I spent some time doing research in the library on this. It is unbelievable that we want to change the name. We have the, who's gonna pay for all the city maps, the regional maps? There's a large cost involved in this when the city is trying to save money. And here we are going to change the name of the street, which was, by the way, before 1904, when it became, became Robert Street, it was actually called Clifton Avenue. A lot of you folks I know personally, I went to school with you, a lot of you, I've worked with you. But to change this name, I am upset for two reasons. One, the legal cost is gonna cost me, and I'm not talking hundreds of dollars, I'm talking thousands of dollars for the different things I'm in. But when communication, sir, and nobody would come and talk to me on one-on-one basis about this, that's where I'm, because you have heart, sir, about communication, communication. I don't know what happened. But the four of us on Robert Street are against changing this because one person said it's gotta be done in quotation, or in harmony with the rest of the tourist industry. I had to have a disagreement... I had to have a disagreement quite a few years ago with the city solicitor and the mayor at that time. I won my battle then, I hope I can win my battle now. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Is there any comments from the counselor, from Mr. Wilson? No, okay, we're good. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. First of all, is there anyone else in the gallery that wants to speak to this issue that hasn't spoken already? Okay, Counselor Wayne.
Yes, first of all, with regards to the, like, what I look at as the eastern branch of Falls Avenue on the other side of Newman Hill, I think it would make more sense to call it East Falls Avenue instead of North Falls Avenue, because both branches actually go northward. One goes northwestward, one goes northeastward. So if we're looking at changing that name, I think East Falls Avenue would be much more appropriate. At this point, however, I can only support changing that and Newman Hill. I can support changing Newman Hill to Falls Avenue, there's no objections from there, but these gentlemen have, all three of them raised what to me were valid concerns, and I can't support changing Robert Street at this time. If, if it is changed, I think, since this is a city initiative, initiated change, then really it behooves us to cover any and all costs that they might incur as a result of that change. But I, I think if Robert Street ends at Falls Avenue, that would do the trick quite nicely, as long as Falls Avenue ends at the top of, of the top of the hill. So Newman Hill would change to Falls Avenue, and Falls Avenue Eastern section would be Falls Avenue East, and at least some of this would be accomplished, and nobody would even duly put out.
Okay, so you're proposing the part, as you call the east, which they refer to as the north, and Newman Hill, but you're saying leave the, the highway portion as its Robson okay. Counselor Gates, Counselor Thompson.
Thanks very much, and to the residents, thanks for coming today and presenting us with your case. I took a look at this report, and I guess the thing that's really sticking out to anything, and again, I, I certainly did enjoy the history around the street, but it's, the issue here that's coming from city staffs is, in the past, the city has only renamed streets where it has been unanimously supported, of all the property owners or their tenants, to change their street names. So we've obviously established a practice, and I think that maybe we should continue to that practice. I think that's, we're really going down a slippery slope here. So to the residents, I appreciate your, your input, but I think by our own wording here from city staff, it's pretty clear that we gotta, we have established it, it has to be unanimous. I think we should leave it like that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Thompson, then Counselor Carrio.
Yeah, well, first of all, nobody is interested in causing any hardship or difficulty with, with the residents, and, and nor did we when we initially initiated the, the purchase and the cleanup of the, the whole street there. And I would like to, you know, we, we heard changing a passport, changing a license, changing, these are all things you do on a regular basis anyway. So it's, it's a normal routine. So I'd like to ask the solicitor, what about wills and, not wills, but properties and deeds and things?
The chairman, that's what we got, Counselor Thompson's question. In the case of legal deeds for, for the non-ownership property.
The address on a legal deed is really kind of add-on in the way the electronic forms work. And so you put one on, if you have one, when you, when you're doing a deed, but you, I can't imagine anybody actually charging, doing a deed solely to change the address on it. When you transfer the property, that's when you change the address on the deed. But the deed is identified by what, the legal description, and in modern usage, the P I N, property identification number of the property, and that won't change whether they, when you change the name of the street. It'll still be the same P I N, they'll still have the same rights and the same property.
So in other words, there's really no cost to that unless you're selling the property either. Anyway, the objective here is to, to make sure we are concerned about the residents who have expressed their concern. So, and I think this is a very important issue that has gone on for a long time, which I support, I know there's no hesitation about that. But I'd like to defer this till the next meeting, to have a report with respect to any costs that would, could be involved, and to respond to some of the concerns that have been expressed, and then we can deal with it with everybody's input.
Okay, so we have a motion for deferral by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Iannone, it's non-debatable.
They're gonna meet with the residents, obviously. The staff are gonna meet with the four residents.
Yes, the idea is, it's deferring so that the, the four residents can maybe make a list of reasonable expectation, and bring that to the staff so that it can be dealt with. That certainly is the, the main issue. I'm gonna ask the clerk to comment.
Yeah, and obviously, staff will do whatever council directs. I just want to note it, though, we did have a meeting with the residents. There was a meeting with the residents back last spring. Ms. Beaman had the meeting. Many of those issues as far as cost to the individual property owners were, were outlined there, were, were mentioned there, but as Mr. Hrlavich says, that wouldn't really be the city's responsibility.
Okay. You heard the motion for deferral? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Wayne is opposed. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, so you will be, you have all the information? Yeah, counsel, we're gonna ask the clerk just to...
Yeah, just another thing, we can't guarantee it'll be back the next meeting, because we have our, our agenda-setting process on Wednesday, so obviously, we haven't started such a report. We'll see what, if we can get it for the next meeting, but failing that, it'll be the following meeting.
Okay, so you'll be notified by the clerk. Thank you very much for attending. Mayor's reports and announcements. First off, notes of sympathy. I regret to announce the following notes of sympathy. Our thoughts go out to Joe Karate, Transit Supervisor, on the passing of his father-in-law, William Walker, as well to the family of Nancy Galella, who recently passed away. Nancy was the wife of retired city employee Frank Galella, the sister of Steve Toth of our Municipal Works Department. Also Blanche Conrad, mother of Lisa Hackner of our Municipal Works Department. Our sympathies go out to you and your families. In recent events, our junior B Canucks were very, very proud of, as they defeated the Port Colborne Pirates. It was a very tough race, but we were victorious. Every game went down to the wire, the arena was packed, there were no spots in the parking lot. For those of you attending the games, I recommend get there early, because there's a huge demand. The outcome, the Port Colborne Mayor Vance Bataway will be wearing the Niagara Falls Canuck jersey at the region and at the Port Colborne Council Meeting. We're very excited about this. It was a lot of trash talk back and forth, but, but in the end, it was a, it was a hard-fought battle, and Niagara Falls is victorious. Now, we have a very similar bet with Thorold Blackhawks, and the mayor of Thorold, Mayor Luciani. We also decided to up the ante. He heard that I make Super Sata, and I found out that he makes some pretty good tomato sauce, so we've decided to also make that part of the bet. So it'll make it just a little more interesting and draw some more attention. We now lead the series two to none, with the next game tomorrow night here in Niagara Falls. So make sure, get out, and get out early. This past week, we were fortunate to have guests, Vice Chairman of China here in Niagara Falls, along with a number of dignitaries. We took them around and showed them a number of sights, and his comments, looking at the cataracts through an interpreter, where he'd never seen anything so majestic, and he had heard about it. There's nothing like this quite in China. And he was very excited to be here and tell everybody back home. The timing is perfect with our A D S, our Approved Destination Status with China. There's over a hundred million traveling middle-class who know Niagara Falls, it's the top of their list. Matter of fact, a lot of them know Niagara Falls much better than Toronto. He said that in most places in China, to describe Toronto, you have to say it's a city near Niagara Falls. I know a lot of people here, we take it for granted, but Niagara Falls is, is world-class, well-known, as we say, world's most famous address. He was absolutely thrilled, and part of the Asian invasion involves India as well. And we were happy to talk to the owners of the Skyline Tower, and they said that their Asian business is up twenty-five percent. So we're looking for that to, to help augment the, the trade. As well, I was at Miss Club Italia on Saturday night, and very, I was pleased to bring greetings, and especially glad to hear the outcome. And tonight, we announced that Counselor Carrio's daughter, Carly Carrio, is the new Miss Club Italia. Congratulations. Counselor Carrio, you, she, he has beautiful daughters, and I know he's very, very proud of her. Is there anything you wanted to, to say, Counselor?
Well, the only thing I'd like to say, your worship, it was a, a great contest, and there was six very nice young ladies in there, and it's unfortunate, your worship, that they all can't win, because in my mind, they're all winners.
Yeah, here, 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 here. As well, I was fortunate on Sunday to go to Suishi Gardens, Suishi Gardens, for a Japan fundraiser, and what a turnout. There were five Japanese restaurants that were hosting the event. The place was packed, and it was a real, well-attended event. Mayor's Youth Advisor, we don't need to say a lot about it, they were here tonight, they had their forum on Saturday at the McBain Center. There's gonna be a full report coming to council. What I can tell you is, these group of students, where a lot of them maybe were sleeping in on Saturday morning, these students were here bright and early, bushy-tailed, and contributing to our community. So we're very lucky to have a group as dedicated as we do. Upcoming events, Scotiabank Convention Center opens this weekend, finally. It's been a long, long time. This is one of the missing pieces to the puzzle. It's been a lot of people working very hard for this to happen. There will be the ribbon cutting, which is open to the public this Friday afternoon. You'll want to be down there by at least three o'clock. It's open to the public, it's, what a chance to tour this facility, it's spectacular. And the advantage that Niagara Falls has over a lot of other destinations is our convention center belongs at a destination that people like to come to. See, a lot of destinations, you won't bring your family, because there might not be a lot for them to do. Niagara Falls is certainly in the caliber of the Orlandos of the world, the places that you like to bring your family. So this is gonna be great, especially since seventy percent of their business will be generated in the shoulder season. And that's a great opportunity to extend the employment well beyond the seasonal period that we traditionally have. So it's gonna be great for the entire community, and kudos to the Fallsview B I A for spearheading this, and Dragun Matovic, and all the other tourism people and political people that have worked very, very hard over the years to make sure this came together, as well as other levels of government for stepping up, provincial and federal. Ontario Early Years Literacy Family Day is gonna take place this Saturday at nine-thirty A M. at the McBain Center. There's gonna be a lot of fun things and activities for your family, please come out and attend. As well, there's been a lot of interest and, and comment about our appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. We're finally here. We have this, first of all, the city's accepting applications for citizen representatives to fill the vacancies for the two thousand and eleven to twenty-fourteen term on the following boards. The Niagara Falls Library Board, the Arts and Culture Committee, Recreation Committee, Park and the City Committee, Committee of Adjustment, Municipal Heritage Committee, Property Standards Committee, Fence Viewers Committee, the Niagara Falls Museums Advisory Board, and the Niagara District Airport Commission. And I know a lot of people ask, you know, which one should I be on? Well, here's your opportunity, tomorrow night, between five and seven P M. at the Gale Center in the Memorial Room. It's gonna be a busy night with the junior B game going on, get there early. Applicants who have never sat on a municipal advisory committee should attend this session. There'll be applications available and an open house and information session. Any returning applicants can pick up forms at the clerk's office at City Hall here on Queen Street, or they can call City Hall and speak with the clerk's department, or go on the city's website at niagarafalls.ca. Completed applications must be submitted to the clerk no later than Friday, April the eighth. That's this Friday at four-thirty P M. And believe me, stick to the time. That's a little inside joke. So, anyway, moving on, communications and comments of the city clerk. First up, item one, Gary Beck requesting a grant equal to the staff costs of three hundred dollars for the road closure associated with the R C A F A parade on May the fifteenth. Motion from Counselor Thompson.
Yes, this is our veterans, and this is three hundred dollars is the staff costs that would be involved in closing a road for a veterans' parade. I would so move.
Okay, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Morocco. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Regional Municipality of Niagara requesting input from council on the application by Comisos for a tourist exempt under the Retail Business Holiday Act. Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. All those in favor?
I...
Oh, I'm sorry, we've got a comment by Counselor Gates.
I saw you were going through that pretty quick, so I apologize, I didn't get my hand up quick enough, Mayor Diadati. I just like to ask a couple of questions, because obviously, this is a day that they won't be able to spend with their families, particularly on stat holidays. I'd like to know what other food stores are open? I think that would, thing, obviously, I, I know the new Walmart will probably be open, and that's in direct competition with grocery stores, so under that, but I think that's probably the biggest question. Obviously, it's a, it's a principal issue to have time off for your family, particularly around Christmas, particularly around Family Day, I think the name states for itself. So I would like to know, maybe if anybody here could help me out, what other ones are open on stat holidays under this exemption in Niagara Falls?
Sure, Doc. We'll ask the clerk to comment on that. Counselor Gates, thank you.
Thanks very much.
What most people don't realize is this actually isn't done through the city, it's done through the region. So the region would have the full list, and it should be noted, it doesn't apply to necessarily every stat holiday. Each business has to make an application for the specific stat holiday. So this one for Comisos is for New Year's Day, Family Day, Good Friday, Victoria Day, Canada Day, Labor Day, and Thanksgiving Day. A number of the other supermarkets do have exemptions. I'd have to get a full list on which specific days, but I know at least in my lifetime here at the city, that the farmer Comisos got permission to open on certain stat holidays, so Sobes has that approval. I know Metro up on Montrose Road has approval to open on certain stat holidays, but interestingly, last council term, they made an application through the region to add a number of additional days, and were refused by the region at that time. I know Zayer's obviously has approval for certain days. I'm not sure what the Walmart has approval through, but I can get a full list through the region. But I should also note to Counselor Gates that this council's gone on record in the past, actually, asking that the province give us the authority to make the determination. The city of Toronto has the authority under the City of Toronto Act to determine which businesses should be open on stat holidays. I think Niagara Falls is unique in the region as far as the type of community that it is, the fact that it's a tourist-based community. A lot of our people work on those days anyways. The ones that don't work often don't have opportunities on other days to get out and do their shopping, and really, there's been a bit of patchwork of approval at this point. It would really make no sense for Comisos to get refused when other supermarkets have the approval to open on various stat holidays.
To that point, Counselor Iannone.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, and I understand where Mr., Counselor Gates is coming from, but just for, for background information, when though, when the businesses that were refused from the region came to the city, they said, look, we understand there are people that want to work, want to spend those holidays with their families, but there are also people counting on that time and a half, double time, to, to augment their income, and we heard that from many people. I know my daughter works for a grocery store, and she, she looks forward to those, because she knows that the full-time people are leaving, and they're gonna stay home with their family, and the part-time kids are gonna go to work, and they like those paychecks. And, you know, we've moved to an economy where now you have the full-time people are saying, you know what, I need the, the double time or the time and a half, just to get my income up to where I need it to be. So that was one of the messages that the workers gave to us the last time they came to us.
Okay, Counselor Wayne.
Similar points, I was going to actually cite the application from Comisos to the region, where they said that there's many more stores in New York State that are prepared to take this business if we are closed. So it's a matter of giving the opportunity for this kind of opportunity here in Niagara Falls rather than at Wegmans. The other thing is, I remember when Value Village was fighting to get the opportunity to open on holidays from the region, there was one Value Village employee I spoke with then, who was very eloquent in wanting to work those holidays, because it gave her a chance to ha, make that extra money, the time and a half wage, and have another day off instead with her family, but come out financially ahead than if she was just given the day off.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? Okay, okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. And council, last clerk, is a city clerk comment here or question. Council, we need to consider whether or not to have a meeting on May second, the date of the federal election. Counselor Thompson.
Yeah, I would move that we not have a meeting, and that we have it at the call of the chair if there's anything important to deal with.
Second.
Okay. Right, any other comment or discussion? Counselor Gates?
Yeah, I just think that it's scheduled for the second, why don't we just move it to the third? If Kojiko's not available, that's fine, but I think it's important that we have meetings, so.
Okay, the clerk, and then we got Counselor Carrio.
We can't move it to the third and have Kojiko here, because...
We can't move it to the 3rd and have Kojiko here because they have other municipalities that they cover on Tuesday nights.
No, I realize that.
Okay, councillor Carrier.
Your worship, I think it looks, it's very obvious from the last few meetings that we're struggling to fill the meetings we have. So, to miss one meeting, I don't think is going to mean too much.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, and just on that point, we checked with our planning department, they have one item that could go on May 2nd, so just one planning item that's been in the hopper for quite some time. So, they could easily schedule that for later in May.
Okay. All right, if there's no other comments, all those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, thank you. And we'll ask the clerk if there's any other council.
Just obviously, I had an additional report that was handed out to you this evening, CD 2011-06 called Notice of Default, it's really for council's information. You may want to speak to it though.
Okay, we've got councillor Anoni, councillor Wayne, or Thompson, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think that's the big elephant in the room, but of course, we're going to have Mayor Diodati here at that meeting because I'd like to make a motion. Council received the notice of default and I'd like to congratulate the clerk for his submission to the judge. And I'd like to move that council support the municipality's motion in court to seek relief from the penalties outlined to prevent the mayor from having to forfeit his seat. That's my first, I want you to know, Mr. Mayor, our support is behind you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. I don't know if I need to declare conflict at all in this, I guess I'm not voting on it, so I'm okay, I'm just trying to, okay, thank you very much councillor.
I have a second motion.
Okay, councillor Wayne, okay, councillor Thompson.
I was just going to do the same thing with respect to the nonsense that's going on with respect to this. I don't know any legislation that does not have a reasonable appeal to it and the previous legislation did have, this is a revised legislation that exists just for this last municipal election. Anybody who was involved in it and were dealing with their accountants found that this form is unacceptable. I asked my accountant and I think Alderman Wing, or councillor Wing and councillor Anoni had the same accountant who could not file our papers three weeks ago like we wanted to, simply because he couldn't get answers to some of his concerns and questions. This was a chartered accountant. He called the municipality and could not get the answers to his questions. He called the ministry for several days without getting a response, finally got a response. He got two responses, one direction and one the other way, so even there is confusion at the ministry. And I don't know what councillor Anoni's second motion is, but it's got to be to send a resolution to the government to examine and redo this form because it is ambiguous, it is very difficult even for the professionals to understand. And I think that's, that any legislation has to have an appeal opportunity rather than the embarrassing and ridiculous situation that you find yourself in, which is no fault of your own.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we can ask the ministry to reexamine this and do a new form for the next time.
That is my next.
Okay, our solicitor is itching to say something.
I think councillor Thompson addressed the issue that I wanted to speak to, not only the form, the act itself is a disaster.
That's right.
And it really needs to be fixed.
Does it shock you?
Oh, absolutely, well, the amazing thing is, when this, when this, when this act was going to be enacted, there were certain municipal solicitors, myself among them, but especially George Westdie, who's sort of the dean of Ontario Municipal Solicitors, going, "Don't do this, this is going to be a problem." And at the time, George was thought to be a bit of a Chicken Little, but he'd been there, done that and he said, "It's going to happen to somebody, I'm telling you, right now, it's going to happen to somebody."
He's a genius.
And unfortunately, we were the ones. The other thing I think really should be, should be said here is that the clerk and I appeared, certainly myself, I never even spoke to Mayor Diodati during the time that we found out this problem and only appeared in the courtroom. I waved at him once when he was in his car. Mayor Diodati had nothing, no input whatever on the arguments I made and why I advised, recommended to Mr. Iafrieda we appear there. I want there to be no mistake about that, we decided on our own that the election, the citizens and the councils would want the election upheld and that's why we proceeded. And certainly, the law allows us to do that, but I just want to be clear that if there's any effort whatever to suggest Mayor Diodati any influence, he had none, none at all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bean, I appreciate, yes councillor Anoni?
Yeah, and I don't think any of us are inferring that. But what I also want to say is when you read every report that's been out and you read Mr. Iafrieda's report here, it's like killing a fly with a hammer. It was a clerical error, a clerical error. And my next motion will be, actually, we can do them both together. I would also move that the province amend the act to allow for an appeal grace period for candidates to correct errors as was previously allowed. I can't imagine how a ministry thinks perfection is the only, only answer and that human beings are not going to make mistakes. And it would seem to me this is huge overkill for something that was literally a clerical error. And I also want to tell the residents, they can stop calling council because it is not our decision whether you retain that seat or not, because I have heard the name Jim Diodati more times every day and I have to tell you, Mr. Mayor, the city's behind you.
Well, thank you very much and hopefully, those same people stop harassing the clerk because, because it's not his fault, he's just doing, is councillor, councillor Wayne?
Yes, and that is a friendly amendment, I was going to propose something similar as well and I will in turn propose a couple of amendments. One is that the ministry corrects Form 4 and for future elections, provide a step-by-step guide for candidates in filling it out, similar to how Revenue Canada provides it for business and personal income tax returns. What really irks me about this whole affair is that the ministry is aware that there is a violation of very basic accounting principles in the revised Form 4 and they have been aware of that violation since January because I discovered it then and phoned the ministry and I made a little bit of a record of it as well. There's an entry required for inventory contributed to a candidate's campaign, it's required under expenses, there is no offsetting line under revenues or income, so you end up with a false deficit. And I know I pointed that out to the gentleman I spoke with then and he acknowledged that that was the case indeed and said, "Well, you know, just declare paper deficit." I said, "I cannot do that because I have already accepted a return of excess contributions that I made and the guidelines say that I can't do this unless I have a campaign surplus." So, there's no way I can do a false deficit and they ended up, but we had a discussion, he ended up consulting the policy people and they came back with, "Well, you know, declare your inventory as your personal contribution." I said, "Well, I can't do that either because that's not my personal stuff, that was paid for by donations in previous election campaigns and if I run enough of a surplus, then I can get it refunded to me when it's not supposed to be." Candidates aren't supposed to be able to benefit personally from campaign contributions in previous elections, so I ended up finding another way around it. But the thing is, I alerted the ministry then to these problems. They have known since January and the fellow I spoke with assured me that this would be passed up to the policy people, my suggestions, which included the step-by-step guide, they've known for over two months. They did nothing to publicly acknowledge the error and to provide guidance to candidates. They did not hastily revise Form 4, it wouldn't have taken too much to correct that very basic error. They did not try to revise it, they have done absolutely nothing. And I am sure that no heads have rolled in Toronto over this, which is a lot more glaring error than something an accountant did and in my own form as well, was revised hastily at the last minute because the accountant, the accountant I used was given one piece of advice and then was given another, you know, they can't sort themselves out up there in Toronto. But instead, a little teeny tiny filing error, not a, not a real error, but a, but a error by an accountant in filing, you know, amounts to this great big mountain and they treat very, you know, very big mountains up there as little teeny tiny antos and just refuse to accept any kind of responsibility at all. So, to me, this is absolutely ridiculous. I have never seen such a huge double standard in my entire life.
Thank you. The clerk, want to comment?
Ken first.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. I was just wondering, for my purposes, for presentation in the court, if I might have the resolutions supporting the mayor and approving of us attending at the court as we did, separate from the ones concerning reforming the law. As I know Judge Henderson was concerned about the political process and I think he'll take great comfort in seeing that the politicians support the effort.
Separate them, I will be in the next.
Yeah, I certainly understand the council's frustration, especially councillor Wing's frustration with the form and I, you know, I can't comment from the provincial government as far as why they didn't take steps to revise the form during the campaign and possibly that's the answer because it was during the campaign. But I, but I will assure you that, you know, the people that we deal with, city clerks, for example, we had an area clerks meeting on Wednesday in Fort Erie and we did have representation from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, who aren't necessarily the policy people, but they certainly listen to us as clerks after each municipal election and also through the AMCTO. So, I think there'll be a fair amount of discussion on these issues. Obviously, unfortunately, Niagara Falls is going to be a bit of a test case on this, you know, but I do, I am hopeful that a lot of what's happening here will go toward some changes in the Municipal Elections Act so we don't get into this gambit in the, in the future.
Thank you.
It would be interesting to see if the glaring errors that are in Form 4, the people who created that are sitting on the pins and needles, losing their jobs. My guess is that error's buried and there's no accountability up there because we certainly didn't get any results and it would seem to me that if, if you're to be held accountable for a clerical error, how are they being held accountable for their huge error? And there's effects, municipal politicians across the entire province, not just one sitting mayor.
Get a chance to vote on that reason.
Let's hope.
Councillor Gates? Yeah, I don't want to talk too long, but first of all, Jim, I was at a family function yesterday and to councillor Anoni's point, my family turned on me wondering why council was trying to sell the mayor out of office. So, it is, it is misunderstood, obviously, it's the act, but I want to compliment yourself, Dean, and our legal department by taking it to court as quickly as you did because I believe that the act is pretty clear on what the punishment is, but as far as the face of a judge who will have to make a ruling has a lot broader base to make that ruling and I'm sure that come Friday, the judge will make that ruling that we all, not only around this council table, but I believe right across the City of Niagara Falls want him to make and I believe it was a good move on whoever made that decision, so.
Thank you very much. Well, then, we can call the vote, I guess, on the first motion. Do we need clarification on the motion or?
No.
Okay. We're good?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, it's unanimous? Okay, and the second motion is on the, yes?
Jim, just a clarification, I don't think we want to have any more conflicts here at all and with all due respect, Dean, should the mayor even be asking, should he maybe step down from the chair to have these motions passed? Just for proper protocol? Sorry, I just want a clarification.
We want to do things right.
I mean, we could do that, I think, you know, the will of the council's pretty obvious in this case, so I'm not too concerned about that.
Can somebody else then call the motion, just for those two, please?
Yeah, we could get Victor to call.
Call him or something?
Yeah, get somebody else to call it, I guess.
Okay, councillor Peter Angelo, you want to call the motion?
There's a motion on the floor. All those in favor? Opposed, it's unanimous, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate, I didn't want to talk until after the vote, but I'm very grateful.
Do you want to deal with the second motion?
Pardon me?
Do you want to deal with the second?
Sure, sure. And the second motion, we've already got a mover and a seconder and that is for asking for the province to amend the, the form and the act to be representative of what it was intended to be, I believe. And you've got the correct words, yes councillor Peter Angelo?
Your worship, and I think with anything new, there's going to be some discrepancies. I know that councillor Wing noticed a discrepancy, I noticed one myself and that was in filing fee, it's kind of the chicken and the egg because you have to give $100 out of your own pocket, but yet they can't come out of your campaign account. Then it has to go down as campaign revenue, then it has to go down as campaign expense. If you pay yourself back, then the vice clerk was just in disarray when I said to him, "But we got a check back from the city, so did the city actually donate $100 to our campaign?" No! The municipality cannot donate to your campaign. So, I mean, there's a lot of ambiguity in, in, in certain situations and I just hope that there is a mechanism that, that they can listen to, I guess, cases like yours and then, and then find that no wrongdoing was done. And especially in the case that when you have professionals actually fill out your paperwork for you, because I think almost every single person on council had professionals do this for them for them. And, and, and still, there was questions to be, and I said, "Almost everyone," because I didn't, I didn't either. And, and still, there was questions that couldn't be answered and, you know, it, it, it's tough when you're trying to make a decision as to what to put in line because you know it's going to be scrutinized and you don't have anyone that can actually answer the question for you. So, there has to be a mechanism that they can hear your case and I know that will be rectified.
Thank you very much and I do appreciate all the support of the council and the residents. I know there was an awful lot of calls and emails at home here at the city, I know the clerk's office, you know, he was kidding me, he said, he goes, "Tell your granny to stop calling me and threatening me." And, you know, but it was cute, I mean, a lot of people wanted to start petitions and, and whatnot, but the fact is, I do appreciate everyone's support, it does mean a lot. And as well, I'm looking forward to, I'm looking forward to a solid decision this Friday by the judge based on the facts and we can get, move forward and focus on moving the city forward for all that it can be and all that it's going to be. So, hopefully, it's just a temporary distraction and onward and upward. So, thank you for everyone's patience going through this. Next up, we're going to start.
Do you want to vote on that?
Oh, I'm sorry, how about a vote on that second, oh, did you want to call?
I don't think so. It just deals with changes.
Okay, I guess I can call that one. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, thank you. Next, we're going to deal some.
You should also just receive and file my report.
Receive, file, councillor Anoni, seconded by councillor Carrier, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Now, moving on to some really exciting stuff, the budget. I'm going to cowl on our budget chair, councillor Peter Angelo to come up and chair this part of the meeting.
Just one thing, one more thing.
One more thing, the clerk has one more thing.
No, there was an additional communication that I forgot about and I apologize, councillor Morocco asked that we approve the request from the Niagara Falls Community Healthcare for Community Healthcare Week the last week of April.
Okay, moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Carrier, all those in favor? It's unanimous. All right, is it okay to move on?
Yeah, you can move now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Left a report and minutes for you. Can you want to do your presentation first?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I know that we have a lot of representatives here from different groups that would like to speak tonight about the reports that are, that council will be debating. Before I let, before I let anyone from the audience speak, I'd like to ask Mr. Harrison if he could, I guess, give council the presentation that he has ready for us.
Thank you, Mr. Budget Chair. I just want to quickly, before I start, I just want to thank everyone. A few weeks ago, I was off and I've been off work for a while and there was a lot of cards and emails and calls from council and staff and people that we deal with regularly in the finance department, I want to thank them for their concern. I also want to thank all the terrific people in the finance department who continue to do the great work that they do and specifically, I want to thank publicly the management team, specifically Annie, Amanda, Lisa and Catherine Louie, who assisted the CAO in keeping the budget documents on, on target. So, moving on, we can see that the budget schedule, what you've dealt with in the last few meetings is basically all of the expenditures. I know in the last meeting, there was a request to get further input from staff in regards to the grants and the fee for services and there are two reports that come from staff in that regard. Tonight's meeting is going to be talking about the non-tax revenues and we're going to come to a conclusion as to where it stands and what the impact is on the levy. We also, on the 18th of April, will be introducing the utility budget. Now that the May 2nd meeting has been canceled, we'll have to reschedule the start of the capital budget. So, tonight, as I talked about the non-tax revenue, we're going to be talking about the progress to date, where we're at, what's the impact for the levy. We're going to have a discussion quickly on. We're going to have a discussion quickly on the fee for service agency funding and the grants agency funding and next steps. We're hopeful that council give us direction as to what the next steps we want to take. So looking at the non-tax revenue, just a quick definition for everyone is non-tax revenue would be any revenue that the city generates that doesn't come from direct property taxation. Just listed here are some of the larger areas that we have revenues. Payments in lieu, payments in lieu are basically properties owned by another level of government or a government agency that do not pay direct taxes, but either by legislation or other manner do pay the city an amount for the, for the land ownership. User fees and service charges are self-explanatory. Those are the fees and charges that we charge for the consumption of our services. Grants, we have significant grants and we'll talk more in what the impact is on one area. Fines, penalties, and interest, this is the collective group of penalties we charge on our taxes. The interest that we earn on receivables. Internal transfers are internal charges within the city for the use, particularly in the fleet area and we'll discuss that. And then other revenue would be others that are not really classified in one of those groups. If we flip to the next chart, we can see that.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Just ask one question about the payments in loos. Is that where the Niagara Parks Commission would fall under?
The payment in lieu, for the Niagara Parks Commission, Mr. Chair pays a payment in lieu of approximately forty-five-hundred dollars, which is by legislation, it goes back to the Niagara Parks Act that goes back to the nineteen twenties and that's for the actual land that they own. The other element of it, which is in discussion frequently, is the compensatory agreement. The compensatory agreement is an agreement that was entered into some years ago, early nineteen seventies, that the Parks Commission agreed that they would pay an amount that's derived of the taxable assessment on their properties and it would be like payment in lieu, but it wasn't a payment in lieu. And currently, we've included that amount in this year's budget as well as last year's budget and we're continuing, the CAOs continuing to negotiate with the Parks Commission on the collection of those amounts.
So we're still waiting for some funds from last year?
Yes.
And then we have budgeted revenue for this year from them?
Yes.
And if we're not to receive that money, any idea what the tax impact would be?
The budget estimate for last year is approximately nine-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. The same amount is in the two thousand and eleven budget. If we were unable to collect that for some reason, that would be approximately one-point-nine-two million dollars. That would be, we'd have to either find additional savings, which again, as all of you know, has been difficult to find this year, or we would have to raise property taxes on the, all the other properties to offset that.
And that, and that would equate to somewhere around four, four and a half percent?
Pardon?
That would equate to somewhere around four, four and a half percent?
Roughly.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there an update on that?
We, we were requested to provide a letter justifying, let's back up a step. The CAO had been in discussions with the previous general manager who is now subsequently retired about continuing the agreement all throughout last year. We've been asked by the Chair of the Parks Commission to provide a letter that justifies the fee for service that we provide and the amounts that we provide. Currently, we're in the process of finalizing that letter. The CAO, in my absence, has been working on that and I think it'll be immediate that we send it out to the Parks Commission.
Was the, was the original agreement, though, not a payment in lieu of taxes?
The original agreement was that the Parks Commission agreed publicly, because there was an announcement with the mayor of the time and the Parks Commission Chair at the time, that the Parks Commission agreed that they had properties that were, that were commercial in nature, that were outside of what, I'd have to look at what the exact, but it was outside of what they normally did on the parks' properties. And as a result, they agreed that they would pay an amount. That amount was determined by the taxable assessment on the properties because IMPACT does continue to put assessment values on those properties. And traditionally, from the nineteen seventy, seventy-three, seventy-four, up until the compensatory agreement was signed in two thousand and four, that was how it was calculated. In two thousand and four, the agreement was a set amount and there was a calculation that was agreed to for the lower of CPI or the annual general levy and that's how it was determined. So again, we're in the process of working with the, or providing the information to the Parks Commission.
And how did a payment in lieu get changed to a fee for service or is that just a phrase that's being thrown around?
Well, payment in lieu, it's always been categorized in our budget as a payment in lieu. It technically isn't a payment in lieu because technically a payment in lieu would have some sort of legislation that supports that. It was a recognition at the time that the Parks Commission was operating properties that were commercial in nature and they agreed that they would, they would pay an amount based on the taxable assessment, but it's not technically a payment in lieu.
Okay.
The, so running through here, I'll just highlight, as you can see, the bottom line, we have about a two percent increase in the total of non-tax revenues, approximately seven-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand dollars. Payment in loos, as I gave a brief discussion, the payment in lieu category is roughly the same, marginally down. That has to do with some of the properties that we have that are payment in lieu oriented. The values fall in slightly. The next category is the grants category. As you're well aware, we've made numerous discussions. The Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund was reduced by approximately two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. We are in a, we are in the difficult category of being in transitional funding. So every year, we're waiting what the province decides as to how that grant is reduced. This year, we received a reduction of slightly around ten percent. So that's reflected in the reduced grant amount. Some of the smaller grants we've raised based on some smaller amounts being increased. Licenses and permits are basically the revenues that are received in the clerks, the finance department, the building department, and some of the parking lot permits and that's pretty well static. The rents, again, in one of the properties, we have a, the rents were reduced at the McBane Center. One of the, one of the tenants did, did leave, so there is a small reduction. We will be looking at that whole issue this year as we, the Director of Building Services has undertaken a review of all our municipal buildings to ensure that we have proper lease agreements and that the leases are reflective of costs. So we will be coming back at that issue in the future. Service charges, user fees, we can see a slight increase in the charges. We, we did see an increase in the arena operations. The Gale Center, as you know, has four pads and the Chippewa Arena has, has another, so our complement of ice pads has increased, but in some of the other areas, there's been a slight reduction as well, which has offset that. The fines and penalties interest is the fifth largest revenue stream we have and there was no, there's no change in the budget amount. I know that there's outstanding a report on council, two councils requested on the penalties we charge. It's important to note that we budget two-point-six million dollars in penalties on taxes, not paid on time. The other areas is the Provincial Offenses Act and some parking fines that make up the full balance. The other areas are small numbers, but in the other revenue category, we've seen, we see a significant increase and that is basically due to the OLG, the full year, the OLG compensatory agreement went from two-point-six million to three million dollars, so that four-hundred-thousand dollars. And then there was some minor revenue increases as well. And lastly, there's been some talk in the expenditure side about fuel costs, increased insurance costs and it was, it was discussed that the offset to that is in the revenues we charge ourselves internally for the fleet and you can see that being in that approximately two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars in increase. So flipping to the other, flipping to the other side, where are we now? When the budget process originally started, we had ninety-seven million dollars, almost ninety-eight million dollars in proposed spending. The actual spending budget and approved was ninety-point-eight million dollars. So that represented a seven-point-eight percent increase in spending. Just to recollect, in two thousand and ten, our spending was reduced by almost one point, almost two percent. So we did have some significant catching up. The other thing is, is that in this amount, there is no allowance for amortization in the budget numbers and that is something we have to address when we talk about the capital budget. So moving to the next.
Mr. Harrison, is that the actual budget expenditures or the approved?
Oh, that is the actual approved budget expenditures, not the actual.
So it's not our actual figures?
Actual budget, kind of, yes. That's a typo. That's a typo. It should be, the approved budget in two thousand and ten was ninety-point-eight million dollars.
We're still waiting on the actuals?
Yes.
Yeah, when will we get that, Mr. Chen? When will we get the actual?
Yes.
The actuals, we're just finalizing the actual documents right now. Usually, the actuals are not produced until our financial statements, which will be sometime in the fall. We do have an indication of where, you know, that are, we should have an operating surplus from last year due to tax supplemental tax increases, almost complimentary to what we had last year or in the same neighborhood. But certainly, usually, we don't provide actuals until our financial statements are come out.
Okay.
So the recommended expenditure reductions were already put forth in the previous council meetings of two-point-eight million dollars. I'm not sure that those have been approved, but we would be looking to, to approve that because that is part of our, our budget plan. So flipping ahead to the next, next statement, we can see, where did we start? We, we talked about a seven-point-one million dollar increase in expenditures. We've had two-point-eight million dollars proposed in reductions. We talked about an increase in non-tax revenues and so the net, this line is called the proposed total expense increases. It could be called the impact on the levy. Last year's levy was, all combined for all levels of taxation was fifty-three-point-four million dollars. So we're looking at a, at a three-point-five million dollar levy increase, which is approximately a six-point-six, six-point-six percent. How is that funded? As I talked about in the opening presentation of the budget, might have been at the beginning of the year before the budget got started, we had a significant assessment growth in two thousand and ten. Approximately just under two percent assessment growth. That's reflective of the strong development increase in the community. We had a large commercial entity come on board. We also had significant growth in our, in our residential properties. So that million, one million fifty-two thousand dollars figure represents what the actual growth is in our assessment base and what the tax impact of that is if the tax rate was to stay the same. The assessment phase in is the amount of money, as you recall, at the beginning of this, at the last, the last assessment notice that was provided was as of January first two thousand and eight and it was effective for the years two thousand and nine through two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, sorry, four years. And basically, what it was, was that the phase in would be brought in one quarter each year of the assessment growth. So there was a destination value that was determined as of December first two thousand, January first two thousand and eight and over the subsequent four years, we would see those assessment increases of the properties. And that assessment phase in is basically the impact of that assessment phase in, the tax, the dollar amount of the assessment phase in for this year. The bottom number is the balance that would be, we need to fund, either by the levy or by other, other means and we'll, we'll talk about that in a few moments. However, just to understand, the next chart shows if levy is increased by the three-point-five million dollars and effectively you would pass the budget, the impact on the average household is as follows. We always like to address the IMPACT noted assessment, which is the standard average household. I'm not sure if that particular property exists, but it is the average of all our households that we have, approximately twenty-two thousand, and the total residential assessment in that class. These numbers are provided by IMPACT. The two thousand and ten number was a property value of one-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-sixty-one dollars. The two thousand and eleven number is two-hundred-thousand-three-hundred-fifty-three. We can see that the assessment dollar value change is nine-thousand-two-hundred-ninety-two or four-point-eight-six percent. The impact, as you can see in all the various charges, when we send out a tax bill, are for the three levels of government. The city's portion, the region's contract for waste that the city is responsible for collecting, the regional tax bill, and then of course, the school board. As has been noted, the region this year has a positive budget, whereas they will not be required to raise their levy as much as the growth that they've received. Should be factored that a lot of the regional growth has been centered on the city of Niagara Falls. City of Niagara Falls, because of the growth that we've experienced, has had a positive impact for all of the ratepayers throughout the region. But looking at this, we see that the impact on the property owner, the standard property owner, the average property owner, would be approximately one-point-five-nine percent or forty-four dollars. So moving forward, that's a number to keep in the back of our minds when we, when we address the following items or the additional solutions. So what are the potential solutions to mitigate the spending difference? And what, what that spending difference is, is the eight-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand dollars. As you, as I talked about, we could have a tax rate increase, which would impact the levy to six-point-six percent. We could have more of a longer-term focus, which would be service level cuts, immediate service level cuts, or user fee increases. These are, these will be more than likely addressed in the years two, three, and four of the current council's mandate in that the approach we're going to be taking and has been adopted is more of a zero-based budget and, and these types of things would be able to be drawn out in those areas. We could use reserves. That's been done in the past where we, we have a reserves that could be used to offset spending and the staff would be hesitant to do that because in fact, what you're doing is you're offsetting this year's expenditures for, by, you'll just be in the same position next year. And it transfers this year's shortfall to next year. And the other, the last item, which council has directed staff to look at, was any additional cuts in the grants or fee for service area. And this was raised while I was away and senior staff. And this was raised while I was away, and senior staff have reviewed the grants and, and the fees for service. There's two reports that were drafted in the CEO's office, and, and basically, the first area was the grants. In 2010, we looked at the, the groups, all of the grant, all of the money that we provided to community agencies was lumped in and was called grants. During the 2010 budget cycle, we tried to differentiate between groups that would be receiving grants and those groups that would be more like fee for service. The differentiating factor in that was, for a fee for service, it was a core municipal service that we were otherwise contracting out to, to an agency to provide, and that it would be an agency agreement in that regard. The grants, and we're providing certainly valuable community work, but it wasn't determined to be a core municipal service that they were providing. And as, as, as we've faced the last two years, where we're cutting money in capital funding projects or in other areas that senior staff have put forth that we can't put forward, it's, it's determined that if it's not a core municipal service, we, we as a senior staff are suggesting that we need to look at that because we are cutting core municipal services to fund these items. Not to say that they're not effective in the community, not to say that they're not needed, it's just a part of the process that we're facing. We also wanted to recognize that. We understand, in the report, we also clarified that there were some groups, the Optimist Park group and the Niagara Falls International Marathon, that were new to the category of requesting grants, and they were addressed in the previous report while I was away. And it was, it was a motion of council not to consider new, new funding. There was some groups in that category, particularly the Village of Chippewa Citizens, and Citizens Group, that basically the grant was to offset an insurance charge. Our current insurance policy covers that group with, with some other community groups. So both the expense that they incur and the grant that we, that we provide is really not necessary for this year. There was two other groups that senior staff felt were in the, the fees for service group, Niagara Falls Badminton Club and Niagara Falls Lawn Bowling Club, that were, when staff in that appropriate area looked at it, it was determined that it really was more of a grant than, than a fee for service. There was groups that were in the fee, that were in the grants group that moved over to fee for service, and I apologize if it's confusing, but it is important to clarify, and it is outlined in your report, particularly the Niagara Falls Horticultural Society, Niagara Falls Concert Band. Both of these groups were viewed as a fee for service, as was the Niagara Falls Swim Lessons Committee. Each of the, all three of these groups were providing a, a direct service. So when we looked at this, for the, the grants group, if I could just go back to the grants, the staff's report suggests that we should reconsider being in the grant business and that we, we recognize the significant pain this will cause many of the, the groups if it was an immediate reduction. However, so in the report, there's a talk about transitional funding over four years. The impact of that would be that the, the grant amount would, would be reduced from $464,000 to $363,000. In the report as well, there's, just for a point of clarity, and it was pointed out to me, is there was a request for the groups to be identified as the amount of reserves that they had that would be available. There was a chart that was provided in, in the report, and some of the information may have been not accurate. We picked up something in the statements called deferred contributions, which technically aren't a reserve. I think more in line with what council was looking for is that did the groups have extra cash or investments that were, that were there? And certainly, we can address those numbers if, if there's a specific question. Moving forward to the fee for service area, because the fee for service is a, a direct provision of service to the municipality for, of course, or business entity, staff is recommending that these groups that are considered fee for service be held at their 2010 amount for 2011, except for a couple of areas. The particular area was the Niagara Falls Library, which there is some salary and labor increases, and that, however, there was a reduction of $60,000 off the $158 for, that was previously discussed. The other item is in the Illumination Board, which is a partnership between City Niagara Falls, City of Niagara Falls, US, Parks Commission, and two other, two. New York State's Park and the Parks, and Niagara Falls Tourism. This is just merely what their expenses are, and it's one-fifth of that amount, and the amount is $38,000 this year. So in, in this regard, staff's report is recommending that we enter into an agreement with each of these groups for, prior to the 2011, 2012 budget being considered, and that we get those in front of council in that time. So in summary, staff are looking for direction in regards to the budget. The, we're looking for, if, if council is to take the recommended cost savings of $2.8 million and the, adopt the council reports and provide transitional funding, the, the impact would be $836,000. If you, if you decide to, to go one step further and, and do the reductions to the grant groups this year, the amount would be approximately $736,000 that would be added to the levy. Or you could deal with, through, through the use of reserves. So that's my presentation, and certainly, Mr. Chairman, if you take any questions or comments.
Okay, I do have some councillors that wish to speak. I have Councillor Einoni and Councillor Wing, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to staff, last year, we freed up a line of credit for the Winter Festival of Lights. And if I'm not mistaken, if I'm not mistaken, were we not supposed to deduct a certain amount every year to cover their line of credit? So I have two questions. What is the line of credit that we underwrote sitting at? And why is it not deducted off the request or the amount we're looking to give them this year?
Sure.
The, the line of credit was security on a $400,000 line of credit. And what, what we have indicated is that the grant would be, or not the grant, the fee for service would be maintained at $342,000. There would be a, a direct, the, the annual payment is not due until later in the spring, but there would be, if they were not able to pay that directly, we would, we would pay that directly to their lending institution, and we would reduce the amount that we would forward them by $100,000. So in fact, they would receive the $342,000, $100,000 would be a direct payment onto the, the line that they have, and the $242,000 would be a payment to the organization for their operating, operations for the year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can somebody tell me how much they're into their line of credit?
The full, I believe that the full amount is, is, is there as of the last, the last operating statement. I'd have to get the, the financials to, to update, and I don't have that information directly in front of me.
So they haven't used any of it? Or it's the balance?
No, no, they've used the full amount.
They've used the entire $400,000?
I believe, I, I don't know the current date today, but that was used, that, that amount is, is, is available. They've used it.
So are we paying it back through their, I, I'm misunderstanding you then, Mr. Harrison, because if I remember the vote, it was that we would be drawing from what we give to pay down the line of credit. How are they paying down the line of credit if they've maxed it already? And are they counting on our monies to do that?
No, the, the line of credit, the payment, our payment of $342,000 would include $100,000 set aside for the payment of that, for their line of credit. When that payment is due, which is sometime later this spring, we would, we would either pay that directly, so we would pay the $100,000 to reduce the operating line of credit, or we would, we would just continue to pay them if they, if they did not need that assistance to pay. At no time would it go over $342,000. And it would be, as I indicated in the report, it would be for, once that transaction is ready to be finalized, we would provide an update to council. So either you're going to get the $100,000, we're going to pay the $100,000 directly, and they would receive $242,000 for operations this year.
That's what I want to hear.
It's either that, or they're going to receive the $342,000. And once I have more information as to what that transaction will be, I, I will, we will be providing a report to council.
I heard what I wanted to hear was that there, that we would really be giving $242 to their operating budget, and we would be paying down on the line of credit. Now, once we start paying down the line of credit, can they continue to use it?
No.
Like, is it done? Is it an open line of credit? What is it?
No, no, it's a, it's a, it's a line of credit. That was one of the conditions that we, we would, we did put in the agreement, and it would be obviously a condition with the lender that they wouldn't, that would be frozen. They couldn't go over the, the balance that's outstanding of $300,000.
So we could, in fact, pay down $100,000, which gives them $100,000 more room, and they can again, max it to $400,000, or they, they cannot access that anymore?
No.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to understand.
Okay, Councillor Wing.
Thank you. I actually have three areas that I want to speak to. The first one is from the presentation on screen, and it's, it's this potential city tax impact frame. And you don't necessarily need to get it out. I just noticed that, though, that the percentage of change for the city urban service area is 6.44% increase. To me, that is an unacceptable figure. There is a 2.27% decrease for waste management services, a 1.15% decrease from the region, only a .51, so half a percent increase from the provincial portion of the tax bill. So the, the net change on the tax bill, if we went right now, would be a 1.59 or 2% increase on the, on the tax bill. But to me, that's really not very honest, because instead of passing on those reductions from the waste management and regional rules, we're absorbing them all and surpassing it with our 6.44% for the urban service area, which is everything inside the, the urban boundary. And that is just too high an amount. Like, I'm sorry, we have got to get that down. There's all kinds of people in that area who are struggling to hang on to their homes. There's all kinds of businesses that are struggling still to stay afloat and to keep their employees employed, and I just, I just find that too high. That's my first comment. I'm, to flip to the, handout, we got, I'm wondering under the, and this is page two, under the payment in moves, first of all, I'll note that some are static, and to me, that's really unrealistic. You know, the things that they're giving us payment in move for, it costs the city to, to provide those, the services they're benefiting from, and our labor and fuel costs and other costs go up every year. So static, to me, is not realistic. And I think I've spoken about this many times in past years. I've noticed some have actually decreased for this year, and the ones I'm particularly wondering about are the federal properties and the Ontario highways and public buildings and the Whirlpool and Rainbow Bridges. And I noticed that we finally, 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 after me harping on this for years, have, are going to be getting some sort of payment from Niagara College. And I'm wondering if we can get those, some monies retroactively as well, because I'm assuming that's for the portion of their property that they've been operating for several years as a commercial income-earning property. Niagara Parks Commission has offices, has had offices in there since, I think, 2003. So Niagara College has been leasing out a portion of that property commercially and earning commercial revenues for it, and we've never seen it reflected before, and I've asked that every year. I'm glad we're finally getting something, but I'd like to see it be retroactive if, if possible. And finally, as far as grants go, I think the real crux of it all is on page two of the staff report on 2011 permissive grants. Staff's responsibility in recommending budget expenditures is to ensure that city taxpayers are funding activities that are the responsibility of the corporation and not those of other levels of government or should be funded by their sources. In fact, this is one of the strategic initiatives adopted by this council, so I think we have to bear that in mind. I'm really happy that staff recognized what I was saying about the Niagara Falls Concert Band and the Niagara Falls Horticultural Society providing, that they're not really, they were really miscategorized under grants, that they really do provide fees for service. I'm glad we've straightened out the insurance coverage for the Village of Chippewa Citizens Committee, because I know that the concerts they put on in Coming to Square are well-attended, very popular there. I'm wondering about the Niagara District Art Association, because when I look at that, it's basically internal rent. You know, the, the supposed grant we give them is money that we essentially pay ourselves for them, using the, the space in the old Victoria Avenue Library, the old Carnegie Building at the corner of Armory Street. And I'm wondering if we can just give them the space and, you know, like, if they, if they were to move out, would we have another tenant? Could we just give them a space until a paying tenant comes along or give them space elsewhere? Or just perhaps run it through, run it through as an Arts and Culture Committee budget line? Because I don't want to, to downplay what the Arts and Culture Committee does, but I, I've sat on the committee, and I see it as sort of a passive kind of role that they play. They're very good at recognizing, you know, what's going on out there in the community in terms of arts and culture. But as far as like the development, the actual, you know, development of arts and culture is a driving force in our community, I mean, that's, that, that the whole more active role is done by the grassroots groups and organizations such as this one. I know, I know the Arts, Niagara District Art Association helped nurture the talents of James Cameron back in the 1970s. And, you know, maybe we should just be running this through as a budget line in the Arts and Culture Committee budget and deleting something else. I mean, you know, a couple of years ago, the Arts and Culture Committee spent $1,000 on decorating Christmas trees. I mean, I'd much rather see that money go to supporting something like this that's been around since the 1940s and has done a lot of good. And I think we all got the email from Ed Senior, I can't remember his last name, but I, you know, I think we all got the email, and you could see the quality of work there. Like, you know, it really is approaching fine art. Yes, thank you. And I, right away, I could see, I could recognize Tony's work in there, and, you know, there's really, there's really some quite, quite good artists in the community. My other suggestions were, okay, the, the, the grant-receiving organizations that really do charitable, like really basic charitable work, you know, providing food and shelter services, that really, those really should be under other levels of government. And so I'd like us to wean them off slowly and find them the alternate revenue sources elsewhere that they, you know, should be able to tap into. If we really want to get our cost for this year down so we're not doing a 6.44% increase, we might have to look at cutting the ones that really aren't charitable, that are more of a just non-profit nature, even more than we are now. We are under so much pressure with the, the payment of, repayment of our debt and the principal. This year is just, I've never seen, but, you know, a debt level, a debt servicing level like we have this year, and I'm just really concerned about, with the fact the economy has not really recovered yet, and we need to find the money without hurting. and we need to find the money without hurting, stirring the economic rebound out there. I'm just really concerned about how we're gonna move forward with this.
Okay, thanks. I have Mayor Deodato. On, on that point?
On that point, I just, I just wanna ask maybe a point of privilege. Uh, if we're gonna debate the grants, I know there's a number of people that are here, and I'm just wondering if maybe they would like to, if any of them are gonna speak, it might be better. They've been waiting for, you know, almost three hours, uh, to have that opportunity. And then we can obviously go back to our internal debate on, uh, just a, just a suggestion on point of privilege.
Yeah, and I did already mention that there are people that are here to speak, so I have Mayor Deodato.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Excuse me, my question is to our Director of Finance. Right now, it was mentioned that one of the ways that we can deal with the, uh, uh, the budget is to dip into reserves. And just to question you, how healthy are the reserves currently? And, uh, what's your suggestion in that regard? Do we have a go-forward plan to replenish them?
Well, I mean, the, uh, the situation with the reserves is, is that, um, you only replenish the reserves if you're willing to charge extra money, uh, for the reserves. We had, uh, passed a reserve policy some time ago, about, uh, a few years ago, and we've never been able to, every year, it's the same where we've, um, had to cut back to, to keep, uh, the rate of property taxes at, at a, at an economic level. Um, we, we do have, um, the land purchase, uh, the biggest one that is unencumbered is the land purchase, uh, or land sale, sorry, we didn't buy it. They, they, they bought our land of approximately seven million dollars. However, um, we do have, uh, issues. And I know the Director of Municipal Works will be, and the Director of Transportation and the Fire Chief. Uh, when we get to the capital budget, they will be looking for financing capital items. Last year, as you recall, we financed the, the, uh, budget by reducing our transfers to capital, which in effect, uh, reduced our, uh, long-term viability, because those things do, uh, get, uh, they do come back that you have to invest in those, those assets. Um, the, the reality of it is, is that the, uh, the reserves have not significantly, uh, been enhanced or reduced, uh, this year. Uh, there will be a year-end report coming forthcoming, uh, relatively soon. We did see one of the reserves have dropped significantly, which is the money that we were, uh, prepaid for the building of the Convention Center. If you recall, uh, as our reserves were artificially high for the last few years, because, um, the province, uh, and their funding partners, uh, pre-funded, uh, their portion of the cost of the, uh, Convention Center. And as construction has built, uh, we've drawn down on those revenues. So, uh, again, uh, there is, the problem with using reserves, uh, is that, uh, you're, you're taking away from next year, 'cause you're just, uh, next year, we will just have to deal with that, uh, again. Um, I think as the C A O in my absence has articulated, we do have some, uh, cost pressures. We also have some, um, um, pressures on our assessment. We have, uh, an assessment appeal, uh, that we're still, uh, trying to work our way through, which is our biggest, uh, our biggest, uh, assessed property, uh, that we need to address. And we, we have the O M P funding, uh, the Ontario Municipal Partnership Funding, which again is in our budget as an annual operating revenue, which the province has indicated that they may be reducing, uh, wholly. And with the provincial ex- election next year, or this, this year, uh, that may be a big problem. So, again, I would caution about using reserves. I would either suggest that, uh, we look for, uh, spending reductions or that we, uh, or that we take the opportunity that's provided by the, the room at the, the region and the room at the waste to have, uh, a, a, a levy increase that addresses the problem. I mean, that levy increase is paying for the new debt. It's paying for the, 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 uh, debt that's been issued on the arena. It's paying for, uh, um, some fuel costs. It's paying for some mar- uh, uh, labor costs. And, and so, uh, you know, I'm not sure, uh, where the reductions would come from to, uh, to, to reduce it. Uh, in past years, there has been cases where the region has increased, uh, their, uh, portion of the levy, and the, the city has had to reduce its portion to, to, uh, provide a, an operation, uh, you know, a, a tax levy increase that's, uh, that's affordable. So I hope I answered your question.
I know the other question, uh, that he had was a, a go-forward strategy in terms of, uh, reserves. And I know that staff has to have talked about our principal and interest payments, sort of topping out in two thousand and twelve. And once we raise our revenues to that point where we're entirely funding our principal and interest payments, then I think staff, uh, I think that's what the mayor is alluding to, sort of have a strategy to replenish reserves.
Yes, the reserve, the reserve, uh, strategy would, would walk hand in hand with the, uh, capital, uh, investment strategy, uh, both where we would maximize, you, you know, we would set a target, and we would spend accordingly.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, and, and I also, I'm, I'm, on record consistently against, uh, using up reserves to pay down, uh, the tax rate, because, uh, that's like, as we say, burn, you know, bring the furniture to heat the house. It's not a long-term solution. It's a short-term, and, and, uh, I don't think that's going down a healthy fiscal path. One point five nine percent is the overall impact based on the, the big picture right now. Region, school board, city, assessment, revenue. Right now, the way it sits right here, this paper, if we were to move forward on this, we're looking at a one point five nine percent overall impact on the average, uh, on the average in the, in the province, is that right? Or in the re- the city, rather.
Yes, and, and it's important to realize that, um, like I said, when IMPAC does the average household, they choose these numbers, which is the, uh, uh, it includes an assessment increase of four point eight-six percent. So if you had a house, a property, uh, that was, that saw its phase-in of under four percent, uh, if it was a commercial property that had, uh, maybe because of a result of a tax appeal, had seen their assessment be lowered or no growth, uh, there, the tax impact of this would be, uh, would be lower for those properties. Likewise, if, if you have a phase-in amount that's greater than four point eight-six percent, you would see a, a percentage-wise difference. But this is the opportunity that faces, uh, council's decision.
Well, I, I'm of the opinion, this is reasonable, all things considered. Uh, looking at the C P I, CPI, the, um, rate of inflation, looking at the fact that we're taking on the debt of the Gale Center, looking at the wage situation we're dealing with, the, the fuel prices and the oil prices, which are reflected in our plastic purchases, our asphalt purchases. I think if we can keep it in and around the rate of inflation, and this year is an opportunity, because the region had a bunch of upload opportunities, was, which will disappear next year. It seems to me that we're putting ourselves in an opportune situation, that we can address our big challenges. And I know we've been talking for years, we've got some big challenges coming. Well, the challenges are here now. And if we can deal with those challenges, uh, with an overall impact of one point five nine percent for one more year, then the debt starts to drop off, I think we're gonna put ourselves in a, in a, in a healthy situation. Thank you.
Okay, and just to let council know, I still do have, um, speakers in the audience that wish to address council. Um, should council wish to take those speakers now, take them now. I have a list of, uh, council members that do wish to speak right now. So, okay, then in that case, I have Counselor Iainoni, Counselor Mayes, Counselor Wing, Counselor Morocco.
I just need to understand what the mayor's saying. Is he talking one point five nine increase on, on top of the four point six assessment?
Yes, it's all in, no?
Yes, you are. I, I, I just need to understand you, because what Mr. Harrison said was, unless the levy increase goes up on top of assessment, we are never going to be able to get ahead in our reserves or stop using our reserves. Did I understand that correctly?
Uh, we, right now, we don't have, uh, anything in our budget to replenish reserves or to build our reserves. We are not, uh, you know, part of the spending cuts was to cut our transfers to capital. So, again, uh, we, this, this is, this information that's put out will show that the overall tax impact, the person that paid taxes of two thousand seven hundred dollars in two thousand and ten will pay two thousand and eight hundred dollars, or forty-four dollars. That's a one point five nine percent increase. That includes these...
Yes, it's a one point five nine percent increase.
That's not on a di- on top of the assessment?
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Mr..
Just, just to try to clarify, Counselor, the top line is the percentage change of the average household assessment. So the average household in the community now has an average assessment of two hundred thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars. That's been about a four point six percent assessment change. But where we sit right now with the presentation you've heard, that's before we get to the grants, before we get to the fee for service, and before we get to any other cuts that you may wanna consider tonight. The average taxpayer would see their overall combined bill, which would include the school board, the region, and the local municipality, of one point five nine percent. That would be an average of forty-four dollars and eighteen cents per household for everything all-in, before we get to any further cuts out in grants.
And that's due to the eight hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars that's still outstanding?
And I think the point is here, and the treasurer's trying to put out is that, in this budget year where we've had to accommodate two point two million dollars in debt, we've had wage increase pressures, we've had fuel increase pressures, we've had insurance increase pressures, and we're able to utilize an opportunity here where we can take some of that upload to the region and minimize the overall impact to the taxpayer, 'cause there's only one tax bill. And we can minimize that by paying our debt, carrying on our path of trying to maintain our level of service. 'Cause I'm gonna stand up here quite frank, we go any deeper than this, we're calling for grant reductions, fee for service reductions, and we're gonna have to be looking at service reductions, because quite frankly, right now, we don't know where else to go. Our spending other than those, other than the items we've talked about tonight, our spending is just slightly below what it was last year. When you factor in those debt factors, which we all knew was coming. You know, we knew that, we knew the arena was there. We know we have to start paying the mortgage on this, on this, uh, arena now for the next thirty years. It's not coming cheaply, but we all, we all knew that was coming. Uh, and then with our other normal inflationary pressures, you know, I think right now, quite honestly, we're sitting in a pretty good place at one point five overall. Now, if we wanna go deeper, those are the other areas we have to look to, the grants, fees for service, and potential service cuts.
And the other thing, uh, Mr. Todd, is that this year, we've been hit with a two point two million dollar increase in our principal and interest charges. But once the city raises its revenues to such point that they cover that, then it's no longer an issue in future budgets.
Yes, Mr. Chair, and that makes a very good point. And we're gonna be coming back in the very near future with a debt strategy that we've talked about. We talked about in our strategic longer-term planning. We need to get the debt under control. If we can get this built into the base, we have one more year where we have some debt that we have to accommodate that we've already spent. We have a radio system and some other building projects that council's already committed to. Next year, in two thousand and twelve, we see ourselves peaking out on that debt level. And then we can kind of wrestle this debt situation to the ground and get a longer-term strategy that we can bring back to council. And that's what we're hoping to do with this debt strategy we'll present to you over the next two to three months.
And I think staff's hope that once our revenues are raised to the point where we're covering all of our debt and interest payments, that as we make room, as our debt starts to drop off after two thousand and twelve, that that money will then go to reserves. Is that correct, Mr. Todd?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Iainoni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would think that those monies we have, once that starts to happen, would then go back to purchasing the things we've cut that we know we need now.
Exactly.
Um, but, so the one point five nine does not include the chart two recommended grant reductions?
The only thing, uh, Counselor, that is included in that number, one point five nine, were the reductions of the two point eight million that we recommended to you two weeks ago.
Of, of city cuts?
Yes, and it, but it did include some reductions to the new grants, any new money in the grants.
But it doesn't include your chart two here that cuts, um, a hundred and five thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight out of the original five fifty-four?
No, that would reduce that number further.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
I have Counselor Mayes, Wing, and Morocco.
Yeah, I'll reserve some of my questions for, uh, after the people do their presentations. But I'm just wondering, too, uh, with the Convention Center, uh, the, uh, the reserves, you say, were quite high. They're probably around seventy or eighty million dollars, but they're not? And the income from, would that have quite an impact on this, or is there no income from that money?
No, uh, the, the arrangement with the financing of the, uh, the Convention Center, um, the, the total amount that was, uh, fronted by the province and, uh, the other funding partners was, uh, thirty-five million dollars. The, uh, the, the amount, the investment, the interest income, the earned income on that was also used as a contribution to the construction of the property, uh, the construction of the facility. There was no, uh...
So there was no impact on, on interest factor?
No, there's been no impact on the, uh, the city. Uh, the only thing is, is that we did, uh, we did invest it, uh, you know, and tried to maximize returns so that we could, we could put it into the, uh, the construction cost of the property.
I imagine the income wasn't that great anyway, but it's gone.
Uh, it was good when we first got the money, but unfortunately, interest rates fall, uh, at the end of two thousand and eight and throughout two thousand and nine and ten.
Okay, my other question was, uh, we've got two arenas for sale. Uh, will that impact the budget in any way? Will that help the reserves?
Uh, no, uh, the, the financing for the arena project was based on, uh, the sale of the two properties, uh, and as a funding source for the capital, uh, project. Um, so, um, I'm hopeful that we'll get what we, uh, we reckon, uh, we suggested, uh, would be. Um, if, if we don't, uh, we would have an impact, which would be a negative impact. If we get additional funds, uh, it could have a positive impact at the end of the day if we had surplus money.
So it is factored into the budget, then?
Uh, it's factored into the, the capital budget for that project as a funding source. It's not factored into this budget.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Wing, Counselor Morocco, please.
Okay, my question right now is how the phased-in IMPAC assessment is going to interact with our mill rate? You know, if a business owner or a homeowner sees a phased-in assessment, um, because of the, the IMPAC increases, that increased him out what our mill rate is applied to?
No, the, the, to answer that question, the assessment, uh, increase, the assessment impact is, on that chart right there, it shows that the average household goes up by an assessment of four point eight-six. It's a fairly complicated, uh, calculation, because it, and then you, then you get into all of the individual properties in the city. If you have an assessment increase of greater than four point eight-six as your phase-in amount, you would see a greater percentage than one point five nine, because your taxes would go up. If, uh, some properties, uh, have a lower than four point eight-six percent, you would see a lower, uh, amount than one point five nine, because all of the tax rates that we use for the calculation of those five areas changes. Now, one of the things that you asked about was the, uh, the impact of assessment, or was asked, is the growth in assessment positively impacts all of those categories. We had a hundred and fifty-nine million dollars in assessment increase this year, which was almost two percent of our assessment base. That positively impacts all those numbers.
Okay, I guess that's my concern, is, you know, we're dealing with averages here, and, uh, we're not dealing with proverbial two hundred and thirty thousand dollar homes out there. We're dealing with hundred and forty-nine thousand dollar homes and, uh, you know, four hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes. And my, my concern is that for those homes and businesses that are seeing above the four points eight-six percent increase, they're going to have an increase in their assessed value and the increase in the rate we apply to that value. So their net impact is going to be a lot more than two percent in certain cases. You know, some, some properties could see a lot more impact.
Mr. Harrison, do you know what the average, um, assessment increase was over the four years? Was it not four point two-five percent?
Uh, yeah, I mean, what, what happens?
So it was lower than the four point eight-six?
Yeah.
That's the average?
Yes, that was, you know, it's important to realize that when we talk about the phase-in, the phase-in talks about the value of your property on this, on January first, two thousand and eight. That's the value of the property. So it's frozen in time. It's then becomes the destination value. And what happened is, they took what the, the value of your property was on December first, or January, for, I think you're saying December, yeah, January first, two thousand and four, and they said, okay, that is, you're gonna get, you're gonna, that assessment increase is gonna go over the next four years. And that's basically what's happened. Again, there are, you're, you're right. I mean, we could prob- probably a handful of properties that meet those exact assessment numbers, that's four point eight-six. Every other property falls somewhere around differently. The reality of it is, is that this is the standard property. If it, if your assessment is going up by four point eight-six percent, the net impact would be, you would see a tax cash out of your pocket, one point five nine percent, uh, increase. And that, that's no different than any other year. We just never presented it in this particular fashion to show all the individual categories. I mean, we, we have history, uh, in, in previous years where the, the regional charges went up, waste management charges, uh, went up, and the city's, uh, portion, uh, was significantly lower or significantly, uh, or even a reduction. So in this particular case, um, this is, this is the, the effect to show the total impact. As the C A O has indicated... As the CIO has indicated, we have some really large spending, first-time spending increases that we have to add to our budget, and this is, without significant, without significant cuts or the use of reserves, I, I, you know, I, I'm standing up here recommending that this is the approach that we would want to take.
Okay.
So I guess then we do the infilling and claim we're keeping the tax increase from the city down to 2%?
Counselor Morocco?
Uh, Chair, you know, there's a number of questions I have to ask. Anyway, I would like to listen to you.
Sure. Okay, is there any other member of council that has a question before I go to the audience? If not, then I have a number of speakers, and I'll just call upon them and see if they'd like to speak. I have Elizabeth Zimmerman from the YWCA, welcome.
Thank you to council for an opportunity to speak on behalf of the YWCA. I know you have a very difficult decision ahead of you, but I did want to have an opportunity to just talk a little bit about the impact of any serious, you know, deep cuts to our organization and our ability to offer sheltering services in the city of Niagara Falls. And also just to remind the council that when we opened, when we were, we were asked and approached by the city of Niagara Falls and the region of Niagara to reopen the shelter in Niagara Falls, as the YWCA of St. Catherine's. And part of the agreement to open it was a grant through, this particular grant, as well as a grant through the United Way to help make it sustainable for offering the shelter services. Since that time, we have been supporting on average about 200 to 250 women and children. And the cost of not offering a shelter for a woman is about $55,000. So the $54,000 grant that you are supporting, ensuring supports this, our organization and our ability to offer shelter services in Niagara Falls is basically the equivalent of one woman who doesn't get service and is homeless in the community. So it is a very cost-effective way of providing services to the Niagara Falls community. And I would ask, you know, consider, that you would consider moving the YWCA and the sheltering services that we provide to actually a fee-for-service. In terms of other levels of government, we do receive per diems based on our occupancy rates, which is in and of itself can be challenging simply because our, you know, occupancy rates can fluctuate, and the cost of operating the shelter doesn't really change, depending on the number of women and children that we do have in the shelter. And in terms of the region or any other levels of government, supporting, further supporting the work of the shelter, there is really no other options for us in terms of applying for other grants or other funding through any other level of government. So I would really appreciate that you would consider sustaining this grant and looking at moving us to a fee-for-service, understanding that it has a very big impact within the Niagara Falls community and the health, social health of the Niagara Falls community, and particularly homeless women and children. And it's not something we would want to see women and children without a place to go at a time of high need. And that's really all, unless you have any questions for me.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of Mrs. Zimmerman? Counselor Wing?
Not really a question, but that's, you know, yours is one of the organizations I thought of when I said, you know, the ones that are truly charitable, food and shelter-based. We have to wean very gradually because especially, you know, times like this, it's important to keep them afloat. But I was not aware that there was actually an agreement between the YWCA and the city and region that this grant would be provided, you know, as a condition of them reopening. I think the fact that we have this important new information that this grant is part of, say, something we agreed to in order to get that shelter to reopen, I think that right there justifies taking a second look at this question.
Okay. Any other member of council have a comment? Okay, Mrs. Zimmerman?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. Next, I have Deborah Attenborough from the Niagara Falls Art Gallery, welcome.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chair, members of council, and ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for the opportunity to provide the Niagara Falls Art Gallery with a chance to speak to our grant requests this year. Like the YWCA, we would like you as a council to consider moving us to a fee-for-service as well, because we continue to develop and create innovative services for Niagara Falls through our three different Niagara Falls art operations. We have the Niagara Falls Art Gallery, which is the public art gallery for Niagara Falls, which includes exhibitions and children's and adults' art programs. We have the Niagara Children's Museum housed in the same location, and that provides hands-on museum activities developed for the needs of families in Niagara. And we have the Niagara Youth Gallery, which is specialized gallery providing professional art services for youth ages 14 to 24. The services the art gallery provides for the community are services that are not currently provided for the city, by the city of Niagara Falls. So those are services which we feel, or opportunities that we feel we provide children and youth and adults in Niagara at substantially reduced costs. And you might question why the art gallery and the children's museum are innovative or different from other museums. The first difference is rather than the general 2,000 to 5,000 participants an average community museum serves, Niagara Falls Art Gallery provides services for over 68,000 participants yearly, of which 33,000 of those participants generate revenue for the art gallery. And these figures are accumulated daily because the bulk of the art gallery's revenues are earned on a daily basis. Another, another difference is that through ongoing community needs analysis, the art gallery provides sustainable arts and culture services. These occur both inside the gallery and outside its facility. Inside programs include three floors of arts-based hands-on activities and art classes for children and adults, yoga classes, ballroom social dance classes, and tai chi, while outside, or outreach services are developed for in the home through internet service points in our neighborhoods. By serving the community needs, our earned revenues of $144,000 were realized in 2009-10, not from grants or potential grants that traditional museums and art galleries depend on, but real dollars earned from our focused community services and based upon service, services that the community identified. So for every dollar the city invests in our art gallery, $4.71 in earned revenues were generated to be reinvested in our community. And they're kept in Niagara Falls. A decrease in a grant impacted particularly hard on subsidized, we had a decrease of $3,000 in, from 2008 to 2009. And that impacted specifically on subsidized recipients such as those with special needs and financially disadvantaged. In order to receive these services, recipients who could not be served by the art gallery did not receive these services or went to other municipalities. A second type of investment is a strategic investment where we're asking for no increase in our grant this year, where that investment helps to develop specialized programs for children and youth, and we project to earn about $19,000 from that, those programs, once they're established. So these programs provide services specifically for Niagara Falls so that people don't have to travel outside of the, or the city for services. Just so that you know, arts organizations from other municipalities have used Niagara Falls as a place to derive income to support their services and infrastructures. The art gallery is one of the only places to use monies from outside of the region and bring that money into Niagara Falls to support our services here. So by working together, the city of Niagara Falls, Niagara Falls Art Gallery, and the children's museum can multiply the city's financial investment by four times and provide expanded services that will keep our residents at home to receive the services they need and deserve. So thank you for your consideration and your attention.
Okay, thank you. Does any member of council have any questions for Mrs. Attenborough? Okay, well, thank you for coming. Next on my list, I have Ruthann Brown from Women's Place, welcome.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity to speak. The first point I'd like to make is in this staff report to council, it listed our reserves at $3,904,947. That is erroneous, that number is from our balance sheet, but only 100,000 of that is in a reserve that we can access as a stabilization fund. Most of that, 200,000 are in reserves that have stipulations on them by the donors, 50,000 in endowment fund, so we can't touch the capital, the interest we can use for operating. And a great portion of that, almost $2 million, is in relationship to the equity in our building. So we would have to sell our building and go out of business to realize that finance. So I just wanted to make that point.
We figured that wasn't right.
Thank you. Part of our, part of our business is social services. We are the safety net for those individuals who need services at the most vulnerable time of their lives, for food, for shelter, so they won't be homeless, and for safety and security when women and children are escaping domestic violence, some who are at risk of being killed. On average in Ontario, 25 women are killed each year by their intimate partner. So we are hoping that council will consider this. The Ministry of Community and Social Services does provide 75% of our funding, but we are, like all shelters in Ontario, they are not fully funded, and we have to in round numbers raise $400,000 a year, of which your city monies are part of that. We are currently under Bill 16, which is a funding freeze for this year and next fiscal year, so we will be receiving no new monies from the Ministry of Community and Social Services, despite the fact that our utilities are going up, despite the fact that our food costs are going up. And in the economic situation that we are currently facing, which as you know, Niagara and Windsor are tied for the highest unemployment in Canada, this exacerbates and escalates pre-existing conditions, and we are having our services used more and more, our crisis call lines, and people coming in fleeing with nothing but the clothes on their back. So please, I ask you to reconsider. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of Mrs. Brown? Counselor Wing?
I'd just like to note that Project Share, Women's Place, and the YWCA are the, the three that I noted as being truly charitable in nature, for food and shelter sort of thing. And both the YWCA and Women's Place serve only women and children, and they serve the most vulnerable women and children. And I think these are really important things for us to continue funding until we can get them onto funding from another, more appropriate level of government. But, I mean, you know, we've just heard that the economy is exacerbating already bad situations. We, we really need to think seriously about these. I mean, I would rather keep the, these three at their usual grant level and cut the ones that are strictly not-for-profit deeper than proposed in order to, to make up the difference and continue giving them the amount we need to give them.
Okay, thank you. Any other member of council, have any question or comment? Oh, sorry, Counselor Gates?
I just want you to clarify what you're trying to say. So what you're saying is the three that made presentations already, you have no problem leaving at their funding level? The two out of the three? Which one?
What I'm saying is you look at what's on our grants list, and there are three that...
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
There are three that deal with basic human needs. They deal with putting food in people's mouths and shelter over their heads. And to, even if it's not really the municipality's job, until we find them, those alternate sources, until we help them to access those alternate sources, I think we need, for the sake of the very vulnerable women and children in our community, and everybody out there who isn't quite able to make ends meet and needs to go to Project Share for help, I think we need, especially in this economy, to keep funding them. The ones that, you know, I realize they provide valuable things to the community, but it's not, they're, it's just so much more important to put food in mouths and roofs overhead. The rest of them, even ones that are coming here tonight and presenting, I'm sorry, there's, there's things that are much more pressing in terms of us funding them with grants.
Counselor Inoney?
I feel like Scrooge. We asked for reserve amounts for a number of property, for a number of agencies. Ruthann explained the reserve amount for her agency. What about the reserve amount for Project Share, for instance? Because there isn't a presentation here that is not going to tug at our hearts. I mean, we all go home, we have to sleep with the decisions we make here. We've all understood for years that these agencies provide important services. But sadly now, we find ourselves in the same positions the agencies are in. We don't have enough money to do our work. You presented us with, I think it was, how many million in cuts? One of the, yeah, one of the charts was cutting 1.6 from our roads, fleets, and storm sewer. I mean, we all campaigned, we were going to improve that, and we're cutting it. But I'm saying, you know, agencies tell us what services they're going to have to cut when they come to council and, and they need the money from us. We're going to see that.
It's difficult for us, I mean, we always get downloading and we never get uploading. It's very difficult for us. Okay, I still have another speaker, and it's Carol Colishaw from the Niagara Falls Concert Band. Is Carol here? Sorry, did you want to speak? Okay.
I was here to answer questions.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? Okay, if not, then, that was the end of the list of my speakers. I just wanted to know if there was any other speakers, and I see Brian Pellos in the audience. Brian, come on up. Welcome.
I'm representing Project Share, and we weren't going to make a presentation, we're just going to be here to answer questions. But I think I'd like to address a couple of the issues that have been brought up, and just as a clarification. And I'll start, I guess, with Counselor Wing. You mentioned that you felt that some of our services should be uploaded to the region, and I just would like you to know that the region has been funding us to the, as much as we could get out of them, and they have announced this year that they're going to cut us by about 26%. So we're doing all we can to get regional funding and funding from wherever else we can get it. One of the other things is, okay, Counselor Inoney mentioned our reserves, and this is something that, you know, I've been deciding how to discuss. Going back several years, Project Share felt that we would probably be wise to have what I call good financial policies. And any good businessperson would know that if you can have a little bit extra money in the bank, that's a good thing. And you should have it there because someday you're going to need it. We had money set aside for vehicle, renovations in the building, and most important of all, food for our clients. We kept it for a rainy day, and as we all know, it's pouring out there right now. So, we are spending our reserves. We're spending probably $10,000 to $15,000 a month more. We're, we're getting, we're, we're giving out that amount more than we're getting in. So our reserves will be depleted very quickly. Everything remaining the same, we could perhaps go a year or two, everything will not remain the same, cost of food will go up, number of clients we're having is increasing every single day. So I don't think that reserve is going to last long. So if anybody's sitting here thinking about reserves for Project Share, don't expect it to be there for a long time. One thing that I'd like to ask is, how much reserves do you think we have? What figure do you have?
494,627.
Okay. Then again, this, this is something that is probably misunderstood because I think perhaps you're adding the value of our building, which has already been mentioned, you can, you've got to sell your building and go out of business before you can have that. Sorry?
Brian, I think these are the figures that were given to us by staff, so...
Yeah, I just want to clarify...
Okay, well, I'm trying to explain what, from our perspective.
But I, I would, I would just, I wanted to clarify that as, the, the fund balances or the equity is $824,000. There's, there's $320,000 that are, that is appropriated, meaning that it's, it's encumbered that they can't, they can't utilize. And then there's another $500,000, $504,000 that's unappropriated, available for general use.
Are you including our inventory? Because we do value our food, and if you're in business, you know you can't add your inventory in a reserve. That's because that comes and goes.
Certainly that's not in your inventory, sir. I, I'm just reading off your financial statements.
Okay, I've got the, sorry, I just want to butt in, yeah. Our financial statements, the 320,000 in appropriated funds leaves only 200 and... funds leaves only two hundred and, um, figured out, two hundred and some thousand in cash. And, uh, last year we gave out two point six million in food, transportation, prescriptions, um, utility assistance only, not including building expenses. Um, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand of, um, what is showing on our balance sheet is our building, which we had a capital campaign years ago, uh, no help from the city, um, other than moral support and, uh, and residential, um, support financially. And, uh, we paid off the building, uh, we have condo fees on that, but, um, the, um, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand is actually the building which we would have to sell, um, to continue if we wanted us to use that. And, and that's from the same, I believe, financial states.
Just on that point?
I just have one or two quick other comments, and then be, feel free to answer questions.
Okay.
Um, going back to Counselor, one of Counselor Wing's comments about, um, fee for service versus, uh, grants, and you did say something about you really believe in groups that serve basic human needs. And I'm just, then you did mention us, and, and I'm just reminding everybody that eating is one of the basic human needs. And the other comment, just to go back way, way back in, in our history, um, who we like to call the father of Project Share, Counselor Thompson, I believe, was, was one of the ones that started Project Share. And I believe it was because people were coming to the doors of City Hall looking for food and they needed help. So ultimately, Project Share was, um, drawn from, uh, City Hall, or City Council, so that's it.
Counselor Thompson?
In fact, the first, uh, food shelves were in the basement of City Hall.
Exactly, and we saw that picture.
Okay, I have Counselor Cario, and you're right about, uh, Counselor Wing.
Thank you, your worship. Um, the reason that I asked the question on reserves, I was really asking the question to get a financial picture, a complete financial picture for everyone that's asking us for money. And it's obvious now that we don't have a good financial picture, because most of the numbers that we've, that we have in our list are not right. But I think it's very important for us to have a good financial picture on anyone that's asking us for money. I still think that's important today. I think we need to get a proper financial picture on everybody who's looking for money. It's important to this council to know who has what, even if we're going to decide who to cut, who not to cut, who to leave alone, who not to leave alone. If we don't have the numbers in front of us, it's very difficult for us to make a decision on who really is in need and who really may have a huge amount of money in surplus that could spend it, and who doesn't. So we need to get that proper financial information.
I don't think we're really coming here tonight to say, you know, um, that we disagree with the, the, the grant process. All we're saying, I think, is that, um, at a certain point, we're going to be just like the city. When we start losing revenue and we've cut all our costs and expenses down, we will be having to reduce service. And that's really all we're kind of having to say, is that at a certain point, cutting services will be necessary. We don't want to do that.
I understand. But further to that comment, uh, Mr. Chairman, that I think that at the end of these discussions, I'm still going to ask for staff to ask for the proper, for proper financial information before we decide to cut any grants, or bef- before we decide to do anything else with grants. I still would like to see a snapshot of the organizations that we're asking, that are asking us for money.
Okay. Could I also ask that council come down and visit us at Project Share?
Sure.
We'd be more than happy to show you our operation, and I, I think you'll find it's a little more than just throwing food at people. It's, it's quite important, actually. I know some of you have been there, but I think some of you never even come in the doors. It's an invitation, anytime.
Okay. Thanks, Brian. Just take a round, there might be some questions. I have Counselors Mayes, Morocco, and Wing.
I just wanted to make a comment on that, myself, uh, Mr. Chairman. I think too, uh, when we look at, uh, Project Share's reserves, I think you'd probably deem that more of an emergency fund. I've been there, watched these people work for the past four years. I've seen where they had to, had to dig into the reserves for people that needed their utility bills and various things paid, and I think that, as, as has been mentioned, it gets worse. And the thing is, I think they need to have a reserve or an emergency fund, or whatever you want to call it, but I think it's vital that they have this extra money. Uh, I know we, we're not susceptible to tsunamis and things like that, but you never know when we're going to have an emergency someday, and they may need that, that money. So I think that, uh, we should, we should hang in with Project Share.
Thank you, Counselor Morocco.
Good chair. I've got, I've got other questions. I mean, I have to tell you that one thing is what Project Share, they do a great job in the community, and they always have, and there's a number of, uh, organizations here that I have to say that, um, it's, it's really difficult to, to cut extremely, because they are offering service to those people that are very, uh, in situations that are less fortunate. And, uh, you know, I just have to say that, uh, Women's Place, it's the Project Share, um, there's just, uh, a few to list. But the question I have for staff is how come there is some organizations on the, uh, the grants or the fees for service that aren't actually seeing a reduction at all, um, to the chair, uh, to staff? And I don't understand why it's not really equally allocated, that everybody has to take a little bit of a hit there on that, on some of them. Uh, and there may be some areas there, I'm not going to target anyone in particular, but, uh, or any group. But I really think these organizations, uh, such as Women's Place, Project Share, the Y, and I, and we have to support our hospital, there's no doubt about supporting our hospital, because if we're not supporting our hospital, uh, that doesn't send out a very good message to, uh, you know, our friends at the NHS. Um, so I, I just want to make it clear, that's where I'm kind of coming from right now, that I can't really see us reducing those costs, but I think that we have to really look at other areas and, uh, see where they can be reduced, and, and why weren't they reduced here? So that can be answered.
Mr. Brown?
Um, on the fee for service list, I guess the first thing is that, um, what we've done with the fee for services, we've frozen them at last year's, uh, amount, other than the library and the illumination board. And so that list takes care of that. Now, if you go back to the grants list, we, uh, in our two point eight million dollar cuts that we had two weeks ago, we had automatically said no new money, uh, so that would take off the Optimus Park for ten thousand and the, uh, International Marathon for fifty-five. So those were completely removed based on our last recommendation. Uh, the Chippewa Citizens, which is zero, that's just insurance, and so we've just absorbed that, I mean, we already pay the insurance on it. And, uh, hmm, I guess, I'm not sure what other ones there are there. So the other ones we're, that we're all going to have, that we recommended, cuts based on the recommendation and report, and I, uh...
I see, to that point, I see that, uh, the grants, yes, you've reduced, but not everything under the fees for service have...
No, fee for service, we froze at last year's levels.
And, and why? Why are you going to penalize organizations such as the ones that are actually, uh, providing a service, sorry, providing a service to people that are very much in need? And that's where it's a little bit difficult for me to time, kind of swallow that pill, is that here's organizations that are really helping people, and, you know, there's other organizations that we're not going to take a few dollars to maybe compensate to help them, the less fortunate.
Maybe here's the, and I'll give you the...
Why are you going to say, why don't then you decide?
No, I'll give you the difficult answer on this. Probably going to ask for my red T-shirt back after tonight's discussions, you know, the, yeah, Diane will be, uh, coming and getting it tomorrow from me. But anyway, um, what we just, what we had a discussion with council last year was that, um, we had fee for service groups and grants. And the fee for service groups were groups that were determined to be groups that provided a direct service on our behalf, that if they weren't doing it, we would be providing that service. So we went through the exercise last year of taking all of our grants and dividing them into two segments, a grants list and a fee for service list. So the fee for service list is a list that we have said, as a council and as a corporation, these are services that we're providing through somebody else, whether it be the Humane Society, Charivan, uh, Boys and Girls Club, whoever else are on that list. So that's why we said those are a direct service, that's part of our core service. You've heard two or three of the groups tonight say, "We believe we're a fee for service. We believe we are providing a core service." Now, I'll stand here and tell you right now, if council determines tonight that you truly want to fund some of these groups on a continual basis, say they're part of our core service and make them a fee for service. My feeling still is that we should be getting out of the grants business, because it falls outside of our core service, and in the long run, we should be getting out of that business and focus on our core service. So if there's groups on the grants list that you truly believe, as a group, that you believe is a core service, something that is important to this council to continue, put them over to fee for service. Our recommendation still says, if they remain a grant, we truly believe we should be getting out of the grants business. And our recommendation is that, in order not to make it that difficult on the groups, is look at a four-year phase out that would coincide with the end of this term of council, where we would wean ourselves completely off the grants.
And, um, and to that point too, I think that we made that very clear, that we just, uh, I know that I did, I just said that we can't just chop them totally, uh, in the one year, it has to be kind of, uh, slowly reduced at some point. But I think there are services out there, or these grants especially, that'll be given to these organizations, nonprofit organizations, that, uh, I, I just don't know where these people were going to go if we don't, they don't provide that service then.
Well, and I, and I think, I, I think Brian made a very good comment, that, uh, you know, we're saying at this level that we truly believe some of these social services should be provided at the regional level. And here's the...
But they are getting...
And here's the region this year cutting back twenty-some-odd percent. Now, when we looked at that N chart, you know, with all due respect, the region was playing the big upload hero this year and giving everybody a huge tax decrease while they're cutting out other groups that we believe they should be funding. So we're caught right in the middle of this. And what we're saying is with our one point five percent increase this year, if you want to maintain it at that level, then that's where we're at. If you want to get a longer-term strategy for grants, we, I think we should really start that strategy tonight, that's what our recommendation was saying. If it's too aggressive for council, then, you know, we're, we're open to, you know, giving you some other ideas on that in terms of extending it over a longer period of time or whatever, or maybe you say we start it next year and give all the groups fair warning this year that we're starting the phase in next year. But bottom line is, if, if you truly believe that any of these groups are something that you believe is a core service, switch them over to the fee for service, and we're going to deal with them on a fee for service agreement with those organizations. If they, if they stay here, again, our philosophy or our recommendation is that we should be weaning ourselves off grants and get out of the grants business over a three or four year period.
I guess the next question is, how do we end up with some of these organizations under the fee for service?
Well, that was the exercise we went through last year, where it was determined that...
Well, and I'm, I'm asking that because I wasn't here last year, so, yeah.
Yeah, well, we went through the exercise of staying to council, okay, let's go down the list. And, um, you know, if we could go right down that list, for example, you know, you look at a fireman's park, well, what we do is we provide them fourteen thousand dollars a year to cut their grass and maintain the park, and every resident of Niagara Falls has access to their property. Um, the Horticultural Society, it's not a lot of money, but they, they buy flowers and plant them on our property. The Animal Control Services, they provide all of our shelter, all of our canine control, all of our dog, uh, dog pickup, dead animal pickup. Charivan provides all of our paratransit service. Again, if the, if, if these groups weren't contracted, and that's really what these are, is contracts to provide that service, if they weren't doing it, we would have to be providing that same service ourselves.
Okay. Thank you for explaining it. Thank you.
Okay, before I make Mr. Pellos stand up here any longer, does anyone have any questions for Brian? Okay.
Can I just make one quick comment? And we weren't prepared to get into the fee for service versus grant discussion, because we felt that that, uh, could be, uh, for another day. But maybe you could just ask yourself, if Project Share wasn't here, who would be feeding the homeless, the children? Um, just as you're funding, for instance, the Boys and Girls Club, I was on the board when, uh, they became fee for service. And the, the question was, who would provide recreation, uh, programs for the children? And the answer was, the city would do it at probably two or three times the amount they're charging. I would submit to you that the, uh, Project Share is a very similar situation, where if you had to feed people, how much would it be costing you to do it? We, we would probably do it for a lot less money. So that's really about all I have to belabor the points, so...
Okay. And I have, um, thanks, Brian.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming. I have Counselor Wing, Counselor Gates, Counselor Inoney, please.
Thank you. Um, I still believe that we should be getting out of the grant business. I, I haven't wavered in that. What I'm proposing instead is a variance in our phase-out schedule. Um, you know, I think we need to do a bit of a priority-setting exercise, and as far as I'm concerned, uh, in terms of what the various grant recipients offer the community, basic human needs has got to be priority number one. Um, you know, and I, yes, I, Mr. Pellos, I did, uh, mention Project Share. Uh, the three I was thinking of, Project Share, Women's Place, and the, the YWCA, those are the, the recipients that provide food and shelter and, uh, very important basic human need services. And, uh, Mr. Pellos' comments, uh, really just reinforce what I've been saying all night. And so what I'd like to propose, uh, instead, uh, is that we take, uh, and I've done a quick calculation, to keep those three, Project Share, Women's Place, and the YWCA at, uh, the twenty-ten, uh, grant level, we need, uh, we need, uh, if my calculations are correct, seventy-four thou-, uh, no, I'm sorry, seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. So what I would like to propose is that we keep those three at last year's level and take the seventy-nine of thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight from the others on that, uh, grants list. So we subtract, uh, that from the, you know, instead of increasing the three hundred and sixty-three thousand and seventy-six dollars at the, on the bottom right corner of the, the chart, that we instead divvy it up amongst the others and take proportionately from them, so that the others on the list are lowered and, uh, you know, it's like, to me, food and shelter trumps Lonboing and Badminton and children's earth classes. Like it's, you know, you just have to do a priority-setting exercise, and, you know, I do believe still that the staff need to work with these organizations and find alternate, uh, funding sources. I would like to see them move from grants from us to alternate funding sources, but in the interim, I think we've heard the human need. And if, you know, I need to make a motion that we, we do it that way, that we keep the figure at three hundred and sixty-three and thousand and seventy-six overall, and, uh, restore the twenty-ten levels to these three and just, uh, decrease the others proportionally, then I'll also move...
So do you have a figure on what the other ones add up to?
I'm sorry, I'm looking at this, uh, recommended amount, uh, twenty-eleven.
Correct.
I'm saying, keep these three that address such basic needs at their twenty-ten level and reduce the others, like just divide that seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight difference up amongst the others, to keep that three hundred and sixty-three thousand and seventy-six overall figure the same, so there's no increase.
Mr. Chairman, I think the other, the others add up to seventy-two thousand dollars.
Yeah, I was going to say, the other three add up to more than three sixty-three.
Just approximately seventy-two thousand.
So is your motion to entirely wipe them out?
I think we have to, uh, you know, and I'm sorry to be, be doing that, but there's some things in life that are more important than others. And just one more comment, we are looking at wiping them out all eventually anyhow, right? I'm just saying, change the schedule. Change the schedule so we can keep helping the most vulnerable in our community during the season on the time.
Is there a seconder to the motion? I'll ask again, is there a seconder? Not the motion, it's not valid. I have, are you done? Sorry? Okay. I have Counselor Gates, Counselor Inoney.
Thanks, Counselor, uh, I, um, didn't want to jump up and down, uh, on every, every debate, so I, I think I'm going to be as clear as I can on the grants and the fee for service. Uh, I'm not interested in cutting grants to, um, not-for-profit organizations, I'm not interested in cutting grants to well-run organizations in our community who have a very strong volunteer base, who make our community better. Uh, they are all too important to this community. Uh, it's already been said today, we have the highest unemployment... today, we have the highest unemployment in the country. Think about that. And the strain that puts on the organizations that are here today. Coming here, they're not in here, they're not in here for themselves, they're in here for the betterment of this community. This is real what's going on. I've had the privilege to go to Project Share, I've had the privilege to go to the YW and see what they're doing and see the good work they're doing in our community. And we have to find a way to fund those organizations. We have to do it. And during a recession is not the time to cut. It's the time to make sure that these have a hand up so they can do that with their community. And I can tell you that people are losing their jobs. And quite frankly, particularly in the manufacturing sector, they're losing their jobs. No fault of their own. They had a good family base. They had a good marriage. And because of that, they ended up losing their houses. They end up having marriage split-ups. And guess where they go? They don't come to this council. They go to Project Share. They go to those type of organizations that need help. Women's Place. I mean, it makes your, almost big tears in your eyes when you see what goes on in Women's Place with young kids that are coming from split-ups of their marriage. And I took a look at the fee for service. And I'm trying to be open here, but I'm going to read this, and I don't like to read because I just, but it says it's fee for service, providing municipal services that would otherwise be provided by municipal staff. And then the number two of that, from the staff, receive funding assistance by providing services that were not core municipal service, but were important to the community. Somebody tell me that these organizations aren't important to our community. They absolutely are. And I understand that we have some challenges. But I can't support cutting grants to, at this time, at all. I believe there's other ways to do it. I have some suggestions, but I don't want to be too long-winded here. But I can tell you that I am not going to support cutting the grants to these organizations. I believe they make our community better. I believe they need our support in time of need. And it's not the time to turn our back on them, it's a time to support them. And if, I guess if things get a little better down the road, maybe we can take another look at this. But they need our help and I'm going to try and give it to them. And that's how I feel. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Iñáñez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's not one of us that doesn't feel like that. I think we can all stand here and recount motions we made to re-put back funding for each and every group that's standing before us. But something Mr. Pellows said, well, it all tugs at your heart, but something Mr. Pellows said when he started was, any good business person knows you should have money in the bank. We don't have spare money in the bank. Our reserves are accounted for. So if I'm going to try to look at this for what I was elected to and not be a bleeding heart and run the city like a business, then we have to cut back. We pay our staff a lot of money to bring suggestions back to us. And I don't demean any of the agencies in front of us. As a matter of fact, I'm pretty certain if I re-looked at it, I'm the one who made the motion to put the Project Share money back at what it was last year. We didn't have the costs and the lack of revenue that we have this year. So, you know, I don't want anybody to leave here thinking anybody around this council does not believe that these groups are important to the community. I just think if we're going to run a business like a business, that's how we have to look at it. And not through our hearts, but through our statements that we're getting within this budget process. So that's just the point I want to make.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. And I think for us, our unaccounted reserves are around the seven million mark. Counselor Wayne.
I'm just not sure that Counselor Gates...
They're accounted for, but they're just not encumbered.
Exactly. Not earmarked.
I'm not sure Counselor Gates was following what I was suggesting. I'm suggesting looking after Project Share and Women's Place and the YWCA and keeping, doing what we've been doing. And I'm just, I'm just wondering why there's no interest in what I'm proposing. You know, if you give people food and shelter, then they don't, you know, it helps keep them out of the hospital. If, you know, the Stanford Lions, they pride themselves on helping the community. We're saying, let us help the community directly by directing that money that way until we can find different ways to get them the money they need. Are the people who, you know, are involved with the Badminton Club and the Lawn Bowling Club really going to begrudge $3,000 and $2,500 respectively for Project Share and Women's Place and the YWCA? Will they really begrudge $2,500 or $3,000 going to something that's a far more basic cause? You know, will the Stanford Lions begrudge $4,500 going to much more basic causes, the sort of things that they like to fund themselves? The art gallery, that was a new grant in 2006. And the reason I remember, because I was off at that time because it'd be with a high-risk pregnancy. And I wasn't here to speak and vote against it because I knew it was a grant that we shouldn't be taking on. You know, there was no grant until five years ago. My daughter just turned five, so I know how long it was. It was five years ago. And the very interesting thing is, I phoned the art gallery this morning to register that five-year-old for art classes. And when I was registering her, the lady at the end of the phone said, okay, so that's for our Niagara Falls site? Why are we giving them $20,000 instead of divvying that $20,000 up amongst Project Share and Women's Place and the YWCA? That's all I'm asking.
Okay. Is there any other member of council that wishes to speak? If not, then I'll take counsel back to the progress to date slide if I can. Mr. Arifita, please. Number eight. I think staff is looking for some direction on the proposed cut. So again, staff had presented council with a budget of 97 million and change. And they're now suggesting that they could do without the $2.828 million. And they're asking council for their endorsement. Mr. Mayor.
I'll make the motion that we move forward as it stands with the overall impact of 1.59%. I think it's reasonable, especially all things considered, all the challenges we're dealing with. And I think staff have done a good job. And I'll make that motion.
Okay. That's a different motion than this slide.
I'm making a motion.
Yes, I understand. I totally understand. I'll just ask Mr. Arifita to move to that slide then. Here we go. Thank you. That was quick.
Yeah.
So the motion on the floor is to approve the budget as is presented tonight, which according to the slide would be a total impact to the average resident of 1.59%. That's the motion that's on the floor. Is there a seconder to that motion? I'll ask again. Is there a seconder to the motion? Okay. Seeing no seconder, can I go back to the progress to date slide, please? Again, it'll be easier if we can get some of these out of the way. Staff had presented a budget of 97 million and change. And they're now suggesting that they can do without the $2.828 million that they are proposing, that they cut from their original asking amount. I'm looking for an endorsement of that from council.
Yeah, I don't think we have any choice there. I think that's...
Exactly.
And I would move that we accept that as a start for the budget discussion.
Okay, thank you. Is there a seconder to that motion? The mayor, thank you. Any questions or comments of the motion? Yes.
The Chair, I'm sorry, but I haven't seen entire budget. We've been piecemealed right now. And you're asking us to support some numbers right now that I may regret. And, you know, I think I still personally need, as my first year coming back on here, to see what's going on the last four years and where I am, a little bit more detailed than a section by a section. So I need to know exactly, and I think as Counselor, what other cuts are we looking at? I might be agreeing to something that later on I say, well, what am I doing? And some of our constituents say, well, what did you agree to that for? I have to see the big picture as we used to, so.
Perhaps I can have Mr. Todd explain.
I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The recommended list that you see up here tonight, we presented two weeks ago. And there was a detailed list of all of what you see here. This is just the summary. So on that detailed list...
Well, to that point, the details, I have a really hard time, and I think I need to report the cuts of 1.6 million to infrastructure, which was part of my campaign, saying that we have to fix our water and sewer and roads.
Well, and this is our dilemma. And, you know, we're...
That's my dilemma, too.
We're standing here before you tonight with that 1.6 million. And that would, if we remove that, it takes us back to our 2010 capital level within the operating budget. And that would be a reduction in roads, fleet, and storm. And what I guess we're saying is, we don't like this any more than you do, but we have to find some way to make this budget work. Our hope is, is that we move, as we move forward, suggesting this cut, for example, of 1.6 million on the capital side, is that as we move forward on our debt strategy that we talked about earlier in the meeting, and our debt will cap out at about a little over $7 million in our operating budget next year. We're sitting at a 6.8% this year. So we still are going to need more debt room next year to pay for some of the commitments we've already made, radio system and the fire department and things of that nature. So we'll have to start paying for those next year. That as we move forward and control our debt, we'll be able to sort of claw back some of this 1.6 over the next three to five years by replenishing it from a maintenance of our debt level. And that's the debt strategy we're going to talk about. So I guess we're standing here tonight saying, you know, we're uncomfortable about recommending the cut. We believe in order to make this budget work, we need to make that cut. But we're sort of going on a leap of faith here saying that as we move forward on our debt management strategy, that we'll be able to recoup this money without additional tax impact through our management of our debt over the next three to five years. So...
Mr. Todd, I appreciate that. And the thing that you said, it's a key thing, too, is without increase, a huge increase to the taxpayers. So basically, what you're saying to me right now and to the rest of council and our constituents out there is that this is the best it gets. Without reducing a lot of our services, cutting all these grants, this is the best it's going to get.
Well, and, you know, here's we are in the balancing act. If we're going to keep the capital in, then we have to look at other service cuts. Service cuts means you want us to go and look at winter control, at sidewalk plowing, at maintenance of our parks, maintenance of our cemeteries.
Right. We've just seen what happens after a snowstorm and how many phone calls you get. And how many trucks are already broken down and not able to get out there and service the calls. So...
And we're not standing here recommending that to you. We're saying that in order to make this work, if council isn't able or wanting to have a larger tax increase this year than an overall increase of 1.5%, remembering that we're building in almost a 5% tax impact on our debt alone of $2.2 million, then where do we go? And we're saying that, you know, our feeling is, on taking this money now, I know Mr. Holman isn't thrilled about it, but he realizes that he's operating at the same level he had last year, hoping that we'll get that money back as we go forward. But again, we're, you know, we've got $5 million on the fee for service page. Those are services we believe we have to provide. We've got $500,000 on the grant page that, you know, we have to deal with. And, you know, here we've got funding levels that people are saying, well, we can't cut there. Well, where do we cut here? I mean, we're offering these ups, we're offering these cuts up reluctantly. But we realize that if we're going to get down to a reasonable budget increase this year, we don't, we honestly don't know where else we go unless we're looking at cuts to service.
Or an increase in taxes.
Or an increase in tax. Obviously, you've got the revenue side and the expenditure side. And, you know, right there, if you're looking at adding $1.6 million back in, we're probably talking about a 4% tax increase to add that back in, which means we'd be looking at an overall tax increase of about 5.5%. And that's just getting back your 1.6 to transfers to capital to further maintain your roads, fleet, and storm store.
I don't know about you, but I couldn't afford that. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions to the motion? There is a motion on the floor. Staff presented a budget to council that was almost $98 million. Then they came back to council and said, we think that we can do with these reductions here. The motion on the floor is to approve these reductions. Is there any other questions to the motion? Counselor Carrigan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This recommended expense reduction is recommending $185,000 out of the grants?
No, not the grants that are tied into the reports that we were dealing with tonight. These were, I believe, new grants?
Yes, we had, we had a list of grants.
They weren't any of the ones that are in the audience or on the reports tonight.
Mister Chairman, if I can run through that. I have the list right in front of me. The list, the reduction was the $50,000 GNGH had originally proposed, requested, had gone down to 50. So that's $50,000. The YWCA Niagara Region had requested 54,000. We had reduced it to last year's amount. So that was 2,677. The Optimist Park, as we showed on the chart, is a new grant of $10,000. It was reduced 100%. Stanford Lions had requested $13,000. We brought them down to the original amount last year of, by $7,000 to $6,000. The Library had requested an increase of $158,000. The amount that we reduced was to $60,000, which was a transfer to their reserves. The Niagara Falls District Art Association had requested an increase of $837 from their previous year. That's what was reduced. And then the Niagara Falls International Marathon had been funded from OPG money, was a new grant that would have hit the taxes, and that was reduced by 55,000. So the total amount came to $185,000.
Okay. Okay. Is there any other question to the motion before I call the motion? Counselor Wayne.
I can't support this. Like Councilor Morocco, I don't feel I have the big picture. And I also have a big problem with cuts to the core services, considering Mr. Holman's jurisdiction. I think we're, I don't know, I just don't feel like we properly prioritize this either. And I just need to see the whole budget like I'm used to. I am not comfortable with this whatsoever.
Mr. Todd.
Yeah, and, you know, and I know it's been difficult for the councils this year because you haven't gotten the pack. But really, it's the same deck of cards, we've just shuffled it differently. So all the information's there. We didn't present it the same way this year. But if I can try to just simplify it a bit for you, and this, this isn't going to be a good conversation for Counselor Morocco or Counselor Gates because they weren't here in a previous council. But the spending that we're recommending this year is pretty much the same spending, give or take a few minor items that was there last year in our $90 million budget. And the new items that you're seeing and where the pressure is this year is with the debt, are any increases on our staffing or benefit costs where we have contractual arrangements with our employees, fuel price increases, and insurance increases. Now, other than those items, we're pretty well spending the same, spending on the same services this year as we had last year. So if we're going to go look in service cuts, we're saying, well, what did we do last year that we're not going to do this year? Because, and we're already quarter way through the year, so, you know, we've got to get on this right away. Because if we're going to cut services, we've only got eight months left of the year now to gain that savings. So we're in a very difficult situation in terms of, with this year, with those pressures that, again, we knew were coming. I mean, we knew, we all knew that we were going to have to pay that mortgage payment on the Gale Center. And without that, we're below the rate of inflation. So, you know, we have to start paying the mortgage payment. And if, you know, by paying that, what other things don't you want to do this year? And that's really what it comes down to. And I hate to be so blunt, but that's basically where we're at here is, you know, and it's just because we've had to take on that extra debt service this year. And, you know, once we get over that hump with having that built into the base, and that's why Mr. Harrison showed you the blended, use the opportunity this year to gain some of that savings at the region. I mean, whenever they've spent big in years, you've had to claw back and make the bill look good. I mean, you hear groups out here saying that they're cutting them at that level, too. So, you know, we're getting cut at both ends. So, you know, we're getting cut at both ends. Anyway, the, you know, when you look at this amount, you know, sort of, I guess, if we're, if we're going to go back, we're probably on, this residual balance is talking about 836,000, which would be money that if you're looking, we'd have to go cut that amount out. Because the other amount you can't cut because it's already committed on your, on your debt servicing, your fuel prices and stuff. And in order to go gain that 836, you're looking at some service level cuts, which means if you're reducing services, we're probably then going to have to go look at our, our staffing levels. And again, we're, we're just looking for direction of council tonight to see where to go further, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. And I'd just like to mention as well, but aside from Council Morocco and aside from Council Gates, everyone on this council supported the arena project. Counselor Gates.
Thanks very much. Just, just a question on the grants. If we left them at 2010 levels, right, would it still be a 1.59% increase?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it would. Okay. I'll, I'll move that motion.
Okay, can you just wait because there is a motion on the
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay. Okay. So the motion is on, the motion that's on the floor is that we accept the proposed cuts that were put forward by staff. The motion was moved, it was duly seconded. I think we've had a full discussion. I'm going to call the motion. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. If you're looking on the progress to date, the next line item says less increase in non-tax revenues. We don't have to have a motion on that, thank heavens, because that'll save us about half an hour. If you go down a little bit, if you go down a little bit where it says assessment growth, we don't have to have a motion on that one either. Because that is the new properties that have come into the tax stream for the city. But the one that is below that, I believe that we do have to have a motion on.
Yes, that's the phase in amount. And again, if, if, if this amount is not included, again, on a 1.6 million, it's about, about 4%. So if we don't take the assessment phase in, again, we have another, this is on the revenue side, because this bracketed number is revenue coming in on an assessment phase in. So again, if, if you don't take that, it's about a 4% impact, which would take that 1.57 up to 5.57 for their votes.
Okay. Council can deal with this one of two ways. I mean, we can make a motion for the assessment phase in, or we can look at the blended rate that's on the other chart. If we do nothing at this point, then we're looking right now at a shortfall of about $2.5 million that we should be giving some direction to staff as how we want to deal with it. And if, and if that's the way that we want to go, then on the very, or on, on the second last slide, but on your last page, we have potential solutions to mitigate spending difference. And there's five different choices there that council can choose from. And there they are up there. Really, those are the only alternatives that we have. That's if we don't want to deal with the assessment phase in, and the $836,000. Counselor Thompson.
Yeah, can you tell me what the, the, we're talking about project share, Women's Place and YWCA, where there were some severe cuts, the other ones, the recommended changes that are being suggested here. How does that impact on the 1.5, or 1.9%?
The 1.59, that would, that would reduce the 1.59% impact. If, if, if council were to adopt any type of reductions to the permissive grants, then that would reduce the
Listening to some of the comments and the sympathy towards some of these key organizations with women and children, keeping those at the same level.
Right.
What, what are we talking about here?
Well, currently, currently, the 1.59% includes full funding of all the grants as is.
As is.
So they, they, they wouldn't be impacted. The, the, if there was any reduction, that would go down marginally. So you may, it may be at a rate, if you were to make those reductions, the blended rate may be somewhere in the
1.4?
1.4 range, 1.42 range.
That's if you were to adopt the reductions for all the groups that are in the report, not leaving out the ones that you said. Leaving out the ones that you said, I, I think there's only about $80,000 left. I mean,
74.
74, yeah. If you reduce it by 25%, you're not even talking $20,000. The impact is pretty much nil.
And, and I know we came in that last year at zero, right?
Yes.
Which, which, which I think was a mistake because we even used our increase in assessment, which
Yes, we did.
Really, really was a, a reduction in the budget.
Well, last year, and to the, where we're looking at the expenditure reductions, we reduced expenditures last year by over $2 million. And that, I, we don't know of any other mistake that actually
That's probably why we're in more trouble than we were. So what was it the previous year? What was, I guess you were here. Do you remember what the, our increase was the year before that?
Spending increase was, I believe,
A percentage?
Pardon?
A percentage?
2.35%, I believe.
Okay, so we're actually lower than that at this budget.
Yeah, but that was on our own spending. That wasn't the blended rate. I'd have to, I, I don't recall 100%. I'd have to get that information.
Which year was that? Our spending has gone down the last two years.
Yes. It's like, again, we had some assessment growth, I said, the phase in as well, but we didn't, it wasn't the whole, it was the case at that time. We didn't go up to The issue that we've faced with a number of years now is that the growth in, the growth in expenditures has been curved. But we've done that through reductions in, in, in capital. If you recall, in 2009, our capital programs remained intact, so we used to be investing in Ontario grant as a full offset of our, of our, of our grant, of our capital spending this year. So that was a one-time use of, of capital, of reserve. Just to find out
Okay, so we're, so we're certainly with a huge increase in the debt costs, we're, we're pretty reasonable budget in comparison with some of the figures I, I hear around the region. I think the form was 4.5% or essential.
Maybe if I could just put that in perspective, because we, we're incurring our 2.2 million dollars in, in debt for the Gale Center and the Boys and Girls Club. And our overall spending, overall expenditures are only up about 4.4, 4.8%, 4.7%. The region who's offering this reduction, their expenditures were up close to 7.5%, 8%. So the region was spending more, but they had all this upload, upload room. And yet our spending is in much better shape expenditure percentage-wise. And yet, again, we're here having the difficulty of having to talk about cutting these kind of things. And, you know, the region's now passed on a, a large decrease because they took all the upload money. So that's why we're suggesting that this year, with everything that's happening, that 1.57 on a blended rate, we believe, rate at this point is a pretty good opportunity for us.
So really, what, what we have to deal with, which is the contentious aspect of this, is the, the grants and the fee for services. If we can get some consensus on that, then we can move on. And I think, I think the, the increase is certainly an acceptable budget in this time and age, for sure.
That increase would hold all the groups, I guess, dollar amounts to the same amount that they asked for last year. Counselor Gates.
Yeah, I guess that's my point again, is that if we do the 1.57, I believe, blended rate, that would get all the grants at the same level as 2010, correct?
Correct.
How much to, some of the council is concerned, how much are we spending in infrastructure? I know we get a, an amount of money from the gas tax, but what would be our expenditure? It's not like we're not putting anything in infrastructure. We are. We might not be as high as we'd like, and I think you'll find that every year, but I, I would think you're spending some money there.
Yeah. We, we received gas tax funding of about $3 million in our utility budgets. Of course, the utility budget's not been tabled, but it's approximately $8.6 million that we have available. We have just under $1 million here. So approximately nine, 10 million that were, the capital budget will determine the level of, of funding that we would be spending. Again, I caution, you know, is that enough? The, the issue is, is that as we, we know in previous years, we have more projects than the ability to fund. We've used up room through the building of the arena of some of the debt capacity that we had. We've gone and, you know, we've built up our debt percentage. And that's what, as the CA always indicated, what we're looking to do is to have a debt management program in the future that we can offset some of that. So to answer Counselor Gates' question, it's about $10 million.
So it's, it's still a significant investment in infrastructure in our community. The, the second thing that, and the good news around the gas tax, we were never sure if that was going to continue on. It is now we made permanent. So I think that would help the city as well on, on a go-for basis, knowing you're going to get X numbers of dollars from the gas tax. And I don't know if that's tied to the price of gas, because we'd get a lot more if that was the case, obviously, with the price of gas.
No, the gas tax is, is fully funded until 2014. Again, that's, but it's, it's more stable than, than it has
Yeah, than it has been in the past. So I, I'd make a motion that we, we do the grants to 2010 with a blended increase of 1.57. Or is it nine or seven? I can't read my own writing, so. All right, nine? Okay.
And before I take the motion, Counselor, because that motion was already put on the floor, I, I need to take a motion of reconsideration. So I'm wondering if you'd like to start by putting a motion of reconsideration on the floor, because the motion was already tried.
Absolutely.
And it was not seconded. So if that motion passes, then I can take the motion. I'm talking to Mr. Arifida. He tells me I need a motion of reconsideration.
Yeah, I would say you have to reconsider it. It didn't even go anywhere the first time.
He says it's a failed motion. He says no second, there is a failed motion. But either way, I mean, if the reconsideration passes, then the chances are that the motion will pass. Okay, thank you. I do have a motioner, I, yes, thank you. I do have a motioner and a seconder. Okay, I'll call the motion for reconsideration. Question?
Yeah, what is it again that we're reconsidering?
Counselor Gates put the motion on the floor to accept the blended increase for the tax rate of 1.59%. That motion was previously put on the floor, didn't have a seconder.
Okay, I recall now, right.
So we need a motion of reconsideration to even deal with the motion. Okay? So there's a motion for reconsideration on the floor. All those in favor? Opposed?
I don't think we need reconsider. Vote for it so we can move on.
And the motion fails. Did the motion fail? I'm sorry, you voted for it?
Yeah. Can we see the vote again, please?
I'll call the vote again. All those in favor?
Where's Phil Mattson?
Thank you. Opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you. You can now put the motion on the floor. Are you making a motion to approve the potential city tax impacts lied that the city Yes. that staff put together?
Yes, and I, and with a blended rate of 1.59.
Okay.
All right.
Do I have a seconder to the motion? I have a couple of them. Okay. Do I have any questions or comments to the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call the motion. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. I believe my work here is done.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen. As we finish up the end of our meeting here, we'll start off with ratification of in-camera recommendations. We ask that the clerk do that for us, please.
Two things. I'll actually remind council that we had an in-camera session at the end of the March 21st meeting, so there is a motion from that meeting. And that was that council approved the operating model between the BIAs and the Niagara Parks Commission as outlined in the report that was considered that evening in the reallocation of the Falls Shuttle net operating costs, 400,000 annually, to the visitor transportation system. And from this evening, that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the agreement with the homeowners for the restoration of the historic Oswald House fence.
Okay, moved by Counselor Wang, seconded by Counselor Morocco. Conflict noted. Counselor Carrion. All, we'll take the vote. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. We've got ratification of Committee of the Whole. Counselor Ianone.
As I'm meeting, the following items are to be ratified from tonight's meeting of the Committee of the Whole. The Committee of the Whole minutes of March 21st be approved. And under reports, RNC 2011-17, that council approved the sports tourism policy effective May 1st, 2011. And under Transit, 2011-18, under Transit Fair Increase Proposal, that Transit endorsed the proposed five-year plan for Transit Fair revisions as outlined in Schedule A. And that the revisions of the conventional service fairs come, come into effect July 1st, 2011. And that revisions of the Falls Shuttle Fair come into effect on May 1st, 2011. And that the commission for the sale of the conventional fare media be increased from 2% to 3%. And that the sale of the Falls Shuttle fare media be decreased from 10% to 5% effective May 1st, 2011. And I so move.
Moved by Counselor Ianone, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Consent agenda? Okay, motion to move the consent agenda by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Gates. Are there any discussions? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. I'll go to bylaws. We'll ask the clerk to advise if there's any additional bylaws or amendments for tonight.
No, your
Okay. And I have a motion to introduce the bylaws. Bylaws be given a first reading. Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Carrion. All those in favor?
Counselor Wang.
Oh, Counselor Wang.
I just wanted to go on record as being opposed to bylaw 2011-38.
Okay. All right.
Okay, bylaws 2011-39, 37 to 2011-46, read it a first time.
Second and third motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Maves. All those in favor?
Bylaws 2011-37 to 2011-46, read it a second and third time and pass.
New business. Counselor Peter Angelo, Counselor Carrion, Counselor Morocco.
Thank you, Your Worship. And I know that we have our manager of economic development here, Mr. Felicetti. And I had sent him an email earlier, and I'll tell you what it was in regards to. It was in regards to the RTO. And, Your Worship, what I'd like to do is I'd like to explore whether or not the city would have any opportunities to, I guess, pass some things on to the RTO that we currently fund. And I know that there's a, a few tourism-related, I guess, fee for service
And I know that there's a few tourism-related, I guess, fee-for-service grants that we give out. And probably some other things that perhaps the RTO might fund. And I know Mr. Fellasetti said that the RTO wasn't set up for, I guess, being a lifeline to operating grants. But I just wanted to make a motion. Hopefully, Mr. Fellasetti could have some discussions with, I guess, administrate the problem at the provincial level, or even representatives of the RTO themselves, and report back to council whether or not there was any opportunities for us to get something off of our books. It'd be nice to finally upload for once, especially since, you know, that would be the marketing body for tourism in the region. So I'll make that motion, your worship.
Okay, we have a motion by councillor Peter Angelo. Councillor Thompson?
Yeah, I'll, no, I won't second the motion. I think, I think what's being requested is contrary to the whole RTO provincial setup. They are there as a marketing group for the region, they are not a grant organization. We, many of the businesses here in the city representatives sit on the RTO. And our objective is to try to dovetail and to tie in our marketing programs with theirs to maximize the benefit for the community. This is representatives from all over the region, whether it be the wine country, Shaw Festival, the Gulf Trail, whatever, they're all looking for their marketing opportunities there in this organization. What we should be doing is petitioning the provincial government to treat Niagara Falls or Niagara region with the RTO, for that, a matter of fact, fairly as far as the grants are concerned. Ottawa gets, I think, $8 million, Toronto something like $22 million for their RTOs. We get 3.5 million here, which is pretty insignificant when we're probably number two as far as tourism in Canada. So if it's information, I think that's fine to get that back. But from the information and the involvement that I've had, and I'm hoping that Mr. Fellasetti will make a comment now, but that's, we've taken every opportunity to get every 10 cents we can down here, and it hasn't been easy.
Maybe just for, we do, just for clarification, is it information you're looking for, or a direction to staff councillor Peter Angelo?
No, I would just hope that Mr. Fellasetti could report back to council. And I mean, if there's other festivals, like over to councillor Thompson, if there's other festivals that are getting on there, then we fund festivals as well, and it would be nice to sort of upload some of it. There's some other things that we have in our budget that we fund, that it would be nice to pass over. And if they're going to do it for one municipality, then why wouldn't they do it for ours? And it wouldn't be, and it wouldn't be fair for them to do it for another municipality as well.
Again, they don't do that, they don't fund or help these, they market the area, they bring people to it. So my favorite, One the Swamp Festival in Wayneville. They are a small regional fair, but they would want to say, okay, if you're doing a marketing program at such, in September, we would certainly like to be a piece of that, so people are coming here, know that that event is taking place. Anyway, I'll let.
Yeah, maybe Mr. Fellasetti, if you don't mind commenting.
Yes, actually, about a year or so ago, when they're looking to establish the RTO, we did have one of the assistant deputy ministers actually come and meet with stakeholders. And we asked that question, was there an opportunity to use some of these funds to assist in funding the organizational event? And the ministry said, no, it wasn't really to be used as a flow-through, it's strictly a marketing organization, do marketing research. And the 3.5 million, as councillor Thompson indicated, the industry feels it's a very low amount of dollars. And so what they'll do is they'll leverage that funding and promote festivals and events and product throughout the region to drive more visitation to the destination. So we attempted, and we went to the province and asked about flow-through funding, and we basically said, that's not what the organization's about, it's about marketing. And people can leverage, when they go do a buy, if they want to tie into that buy that they're doing in the marketplace, they're welcome to do that. So the goal is to leverage 3.5 million into seven or eight or nine million dollars from the private sector. But we'd be happy to go back, we could go back to the board, but that's the indication we received to date from the province.
Okay, I need a motion to go past 11, we're almost there. Motion by councillor Cario, seconded by councillor Maves, all those in favor? Okay. What's that? Opposed, okay, can I try, thank you. So the motion again, okay, so we've got a motion on the floor?
No, no, a seconder yet.
What's that, right, we're going to look for a seconder. Asking staff to report back on?
On how the?
No, did you want to, in light of what you heard from councillor, Mr. Fellasetti, did you want to revise or pursue it?
I really don't want to make Mr. Fellasetti do anything that he doesn't want to do. I think it would be nice to upload something, but if the opportunity isn't there, and he really believes that it isn't, then it isn't there, your worship.
Yeah.
Through the mayor, we'll be more than happy to go back to the board and bring this forward to the board. And then we can, at the very least, provide an email to council and let you know what the response was. But we do not hesitate going forward, looking for money. We're always prepared to ask for funding in support of what you're asking, so we'll do that.
Okay, so we don't necessarily need a motion for that then, okay, sounds good. Next, we've got councillor Cario. Cario, Morocco.
Thank you, your worship, through you to whoever. Oh, am I up, or are you still talking?
No, you're up, no, no, I'm sorry, you're up.
Through you to the engineer, the bridge in Chippewa, I don't know if everyone saw the article. I passed along the reason that was given to me by Mr. Holman to the residents, and I couldn't get away from him fast enough. That I was told that the white lines couldn't be painted on the road, that's why the bridge wasn't open, and they wondered why I would accept that answer. So is there a time when the bridge is going to be open, and if not, why not?
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Cario's question, we can certainly put the lines on the roadway and move the barriers, but when the asphalt plants are open at the end of this month, we're going to put the top coat of asphalt on. So it makes sense to do it once, and you're right. I know that there has been some minor inconvenience, but there's still two lanes of traffic getting through that. It doesn't look very nice, but it doesn't make sense to do it twice.
Okay, councillor Morocco?
No, I'm good.
You're good, councillor Gates?
Just real quick, I just wanted to ask if there's any way, and it doesn't have to be done tonight, because I know a lot of, it's been a long night already, but on the Gale Centre, could somebody from staff, please, send me something on exactly how we ended up with one road in and one road out, and what the holdup is with the other road. I enjoy going to the Canucks games, and I went to the game the other night when they were successful in beating Fort Colburn. The place was almost, almost full. I didn't leave till 45 minutes after the game, and as I'm walking to my car, some of our residents were asking me about it. And unfortunately, I didn't have the answer, and I don't like having that. So could somebody either send me something, so at least I have some of the history and some of the background on how that happened? And I think the residents, quite frankly, would like to know as well, because they're asking me during the periods.
We'll get an update from Mr. Drenn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Basically, the problem with the access is really that there's an EA process, and there's, we're waiting for a decision, and it's a regional situation. And so what's happened is there's supposed to be an extension of Thorl Stone Road, and there's been, we're waiting for a decision from the province to okay us putting, or the region putting the road through. So right now, the only road that we can, that can access that is fourth. There is a report that was done in the past, and I can forward that to you, to give you all the information on it. Also, the decision from the region as to when this is going to happen. I believe that was an information item a few councils' meetings ago, but I'll send that off to you.
Just a follow-up, why wouldn't it have been all done at the same time? I guess that's kind of where the big question is being asked.
Yeah, just quickly, originally when the Gale Centre went in, that road wasn't contemplated. When the property was located, it was always going to be Fourth Avenue, then the region went ahead. And it's two phases, it's Thorl Stone Road to Fourth, that's going to be completed next year. And then it's Fourth to Victoria Avenue, which I don't even believe is in their five-year plan. So the first phase that will only get, that will help things, will take traffic out Thorl Stone Road west from the property. And that, they've said that that'll be done next year. And Mr. Drenn's right, the delay is the environmental process with the Ministry of Environment.
Okay, councillor Gates too, did you have a question you want to?
No, I'm good, buddy.
Okay, councillor Thompson?
Yep, talking about economic development, and we've heard about the unemployment that we have here. It puzzles me why I don't see the uprising and the reaction to some of the things that are happening with respect to employment opportunities here. We have a, an industry in Welland, which is part of the auto industry, which has been there for years, and at one point had 700 or 800 employees, now down to about 300. But all of a sudden, now the plant is closing. U.S. company that I understand, we talked about Buy Canada, well, U.S. says Buy U.S., and I think there's even incentives to U.S. plants to come back to the U.S. very quietly. In fact, I think Obama, when he got in, was on this U.S. kick and come on back to the U.S. I don't understand, and maybe through you to Mr. Fellasetti, and I could have asked him before, but this has been on my mind for quite some time. Here we have a major industry, and it affects everybody in the region, not just the Welland area. 300 great jobs, which had the potential of being 700, 800. And we're not, we're not really aggressively approaching the province and the federal government and everybody concerned to make sure that all kinds of pressure is brought to bear on these people to maybe rethink. You know, I go back years with the Oneida plant, all of a sudden saying, oh, we got lots of room in one of our plants in Oneida, New York, we're pulling out after being here, and yet the plant's still there. And, you know, why don't we boycott some of these people as far as pulling out and leaving the jobs vacant here? I'm just wondering if we can, if there's any resolutions we can do, if there's any pressure we can put on our members of provincial and federal parliament. Apparently, these people have received subsidies in the past from the governments, and then all of a sudden, they want to pull out and move back to the states. Pretty sad situation, when I understand this plant is one of the few very profitable ones that, similar to the Ford Glass plant, when they left. A disaster here, and didn't have to happen. But I'm wondering if maybe Mr. Fellasetti can tell us, maybe they've been working aggressively on this, but it's not in Niagara Falls, but it affects all of us, and there's people here that are adversely affected.
You're absolutely right, just because it isn't here, it doesn't mean it doesn't affect us. Mr. Fellasetti?
Yeah, we work closely with, obviously, our colleagues in Welland, I know they've attempted. In the province of Ontario, bonusing is not permitted, whereas in many U.S. states it is. So that's sometimes what you compete with, and you mentioned another issue. And when you have capacity in the U.S. operations, if it's an international-type operation, and they're looking at, you know, consolidating, that's sometimes what we get faced with, is that consolidation. But anyway, that, you know, when you're dealing with incentives, if that's what you're talking about, right now, it's not permitted. The only areas that we are allowed to have incentives are in CIP areas and in brownfield redevelopment. So that's the only location that the province will allow us to provide incentives to these plants. But it never hurts to remind our caucus members provincially and federally, anytime there's an opportunity for a lead, because both the province and the feds have staff out internationally looking for leads, that they don't forget about this jurisdiction. So that's always a positive thing.
Councillor Thompson?
Yeah, I wasn't thinking of, I'm very familiar with bonusing at the local level. I'm talking about approaching the provincial and federal government for some kind of assistance to, you know, you always see that the premier or the prime minister at some plant giving him a few million dollars of incentive and upgrading and improvements and research and development. Is there anything that we can suggest, or any momentum we can do to try to do something about that, not from the local level?
I can get, I think in this particular case, it was a concentration of operations with that plant. But, you know, I can relay that when we had the same situation with Ed Shaw, we went to the province, we lobbied the province. We even had a situation where the North American president was prepared to actually close one of the Mexican operations to bring it up here, and we were looking for a $3 million loan, but we couldn't get the loan. There was obviously some issues with the parent company, but we always attempt to do that. We will continue to do that whenever there's an opportunity, when that situation arises. So that's, the first goal we go to is to look at programs within the province and the federal government.
So has that been done in this case?
I believe they have looked at that, they've approached the province. But again, I think it's to a point where that industry's made up their mind, unfortunately, that's my understanding.
Well, it's a pretty sad situation.
Absolutely. Any other, yes, councillor Wang?
Just on that, you know, this brings back to mind, in 2005, when I tried to say that we need to support John Deere, we need to give them preferential treatment in bidding to try and keep that plant here. I know there wasn't really much of a reception for my suggestion, but we've since lost them. If we can't offer incentives, then let us at least do what we can in terms of our purchase power to try and support Canadian companies, Ontario companies, local companies. You know, sometimes that's the only clue we have.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, motion for adjournment. What's that? Motion for adjournment, councillor Cario, seconded by councillor Maves, all in favor? All right, thank you.
To take water was defeated. See, the town entered into an agreement with L Campbell and Associates immediately to complete a study for the Harrison-Routh OPG permits to take water. Staff convened an irrigation committee meeting with representative from L Campbell and Associates immediately to discuss terms of this study plan for the Ministry of the Environment. A report be prepared concerning any outstanding documents concerning the permit to take water that are in default with the Ministry of the Environment. And a letter from the Ontario Federation of Agriculture received and forwarded to the Ministry of the Environment. And a meeting be set up with the Ministry of the Environment and Niagara Plains Conservation Authority and the Ministry of Agriculture and Food. Item D, the October 18, 2007 irrigation minutes be received and the motions contained therein be adopted. I move, seconded by councillor Kaiser Nelson, that the minutes and reports of the November 5, 2007 Public Works Advisory Committee be adopted.
Thank you, councillor, are there any questions or comments, councillor Collard, Laurie Mazin?
Just one comment, and it's with regard to our irrigation and drainage system in general, Deputy Lord Mayor. I think that we as a council are going to have to pay very close attention to this, because it was only a short period ago where we were being told that the NPCA is going to be putting special requirements around our drainage system because they in fact become fish habitat. And the drainage system, in fact, only has water in it when we put water into it. And so, and now we're getting rumbles from, rumblings from other levels of provincial government that in fact, we may need to spend a whole lot of money, more than we're used to. And all of the money that we're spending, most of the lion's share, but is coming from the growers themselves. But tens of thousands of dollars in order to study the challenge of what might happen to a drain when the water's not in it. Because there may to a drain when the water's not in it, because there may just be a fish egg in that drain. And the fish habitat doesn't exist in the fall and winter when we don't put water into the drain. And that is money that, especially in these times of green belt, are sorely needed by the growers to maximize their crop. And I think we need to pay attention to this because, not that we don't want a good system, but I think that when other levels of government are taking a look at our drainage system and saying, well, we've got to protect, wait a minute, there's no water in that drain unless we put water in that drain. Yes, there's water in for spring runoff, and there's water after a major storm, but that's what drains do, they take the water away. And the water for irrigation is only there, and by the way, we have it by a provincial act of parliament that we're allowed to do that. We're one of the first municipalities allowed to do it. But now, to come back and threaten us, basically, is what they're doing with regard to having to spend copious amounts of money on a drain that would be dry because there could be a fish egg in it, we need to pay attention to that, and we need to be able to stand up at some point and say, we've done our own work, and we don't think you're right about this.
And I think that's what we are doing here. We have, we're very blessed in this community to have the system we do have, and we're the envy of a lot of other communities, and they actually look to us for guidance and direction. They come down on a regular basis. I think that our irrigation committee has done a great job, actually, and we've got Counselor House and Lowry who sit on that committee, at keeping us abreast of what may be coming down the pipes, so to speak. And I thought that the Chair did a great job last week, actually, in presenting her case to us, and that's why we're here today, and we've established that we want to call a meeting.
And we need to support the Chair, and we need to support the committee. I've been, I have been a member in the past of that committee, and I remember when we used to have to go up, when the pumps up at the wells in St. David's, we used to have to go up, and they'd shut down because they'd sucked fish out of the hydro canal and then plugged themselves, and they'd have to be backwashed all the time. I mean, that was years and years ago, and we've got such a better system now, but, you know, again, senior levels of government saying to our growers, this may be coming at you, we've got to pay attention to make sure that it doesn't.
And I believe we are. Counselor Lowry?
Yes, just a follow-up. We did have a meeting last week with the Irrigation Committee with Lisa Campbell. She did offer some guidance and some hope that we could reduce that tremendous cost to the growers, and she is following up, and she will have a memo off or a partial study off to the ministry for November the nineteenth. We'll be meeting again this week, I believe, to review that before it goes in, to make sure that we have an opportunity to perhaps challenge some of the requirements. Her feelings were that we should be testing the water as it enters these streams, not testing it while it's passing through farms and so on. So that was, I think, some, almost half of the cost, and that may, there may be an opportunity to reduce that. So those in attendance, I think we're hopeful that you'll have some opportunity to reduce the burden, and we'll be meeting again this week before that letter goes in.
Thank you. Counselor Mazin, then, House?
Thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor. Counselor Lowry had answered the question I was about to, thank you.
That's great, thank you. Counselor House?
Thank you. I think what we discovered with meeting with Lisa Campbell was that maybe the ministry needs some education as to how our irrigation systems work. They just sort of have a generic questionnaire, and they send out requests for plans based on what they figure is how creeks normally work. These aren't creeks or drainage systems. And they are sort of afraid of the fact that since we're putting water in, that possibly water is being trapped up at the upper end of the system, that some fish may be trapped up there, and maybe some fish may be dying because of the way we run our systems. They're not aware of the fact that when we shut down our systems, the total system is drained, there is no portions of the drains where there's ponds of water, where fish may be stranded, and this type of thing. So I think Lisa's opinion and our committee's opinion is that we have to do some education, we have to meet with the ministry people, we have to explain how our systems work, and we have to convince them that what they're asking for is not really logical as it applies to our drains, and possibly reduce substantially their request for monitoring of what they perceive as a problem, which we don't perceive as a problem.
Thank you for that update, and thank you for your work as well on the committee. And you're right, I think sometimes the ministry may be just painting all watersheds and watercourses with the same brush, and we may need to bring them down here and show us, show them exactly what is involved with this irrigation system. Any other questions or comments with regards to public works? Seeing none, then to the motion before us. All in favor? Against? And that carries.
Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee Chair, Counselor Viola.
Thank you, Acting Lord Mayor. The following is a brief summary of the recommendations from the November fifth, two thousand and seven Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee meeting, which had been referred to this council meeting for consideration. Item A, the two thousand and eight tennis agreement be approved. Item B, the Lakeshore Cemetery office expansion project be held in abeyance until two thousand and eight, as only one tender was received. Item C, approval be granted to Baird and Associates to provide engineering services for the replacement of the steel bin wall at Queen's Royal Park. And last, item D, St. David's Parquet being constructed by the St. David's Rate Area Association located on regional property at Four Mile Creek and York Road be covered under the town's general liability policy. I, Counselor Art Viola, move, seconded by Counselor Martin Massa, that the minutes and reports of the November fifth, two thousand and seven Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee be adopted.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there any questions or comments to Parks and Recreation? Counselor Coller?
One question, and I don't remember it from the report. The Part D with regard to the St. David's Parquet, it's on regional property, and it's going to be maintained on regional property. Why is our insurance covering that?
CEO, you wanted to address that?
Mr. Chair, it's, it'll be maintained. You are correct in what you're saying, there's no additional cost to us from our insurance company to extend that coverage.
Okay. Then that's acceptable. I'm glad it is. Any other questions or comments to Parks and Recreation? Seeing none, then to the motion before us. All in favor? Against? And that carries. Public Planning Advisory Committee, Madam Clerk.
By Counselor A. Kaiser Nelson, seconded by Counselor G. House, that the minutes slash report of the November fifth, two thousand and seven Public Planning Advisory Committee meeting be received?
Questions or comments? To the motion, all in favor? Against? That carries. Planning Advisory Committee Vice Chair, Counselor Kaiser Nelson.
The following is a brief summary of the recommendations from the November fifth, two thousand and seven Planning Advisory Committee meeting, which have been referred to this council meeting for consideration. Item A, the zoning bylaw amendment for property located at ten ninety-three, line six, be approved. Item B, the recommendations contained in PDS zero seven zero seven seven regarding two eight nine Ricardo Street be set aside, and that the applicant establish an appropriate lot for the existing home that maintains the estate lot setting, character, and ambiance based on further information from the Municipal Heritage Committee. That council provide direction with respect to the creation of two lots on the remainder of the lands. That the existing dwelling be designated under Part Four of the Ontario Heritage Act, and that Recommendation Five of the report, PDS zero seven zero seven seven B regarding the revised streetscape study for the proposed development on the revised plans be received and referred to Municipal Heritage Committee for review and comment. Item C, the Chamber of Commerce be offered the opportunity to provide input to council on the proposed Queen Pickton Commercial Zone category, the November nineteenth, two thousand and seven Committee of the Home Meeting, and that following this meeting, council provide direction to staff regarding the range and type of permitted uses council wishes to permit. Item D, staff be directed to request a meeting with the region to discuss the urbanization on York Road fronting the Farucci property. And item E, staff be directed to investigate the status of a specific property on Four Mile Creek Road and a building at the Cleanston Dock area. I, Counselor Andrea Kaiser Nelson, seconded by Counselor Robert House, that the minutes and reports of the November fifth Planning Advisory Committee meeting be adopted.
Thank you, Counselor. Questions or comments with regards to planning? Counselor Lowry?
Yes, on Item B, I'm not sure if this should be lifted, but I would go back to last week. Mr. Richardson acted on behalf of the applicant, and he gave us all a copy of a resolution. In that resolution, he prefaced each item by saying, as a condition of severance, these things will be happening. And I noticed, and I recall, I can recall when you brought the points down that were on one by one, that we failed to put that in. I think in the spirit of it, I think we were all inferring that this would go to Committee of Adjustments, and this would be conditional upon that approval. So I'm suggesting, I'm not sure if it's a friendly amendment or not, but under B, right after Ricardo Street be set aside in the second line? Would it be covered?
It would be better if you'd go to the actual minutes instead of the summary page, as the minutes actually outline the recommendations by numbers, and we could actually go through them. Sorry. It's just easier to follow it than, like, I just try to make a little summary out of each recommendation on that page.
And each recommendation is actually listed, Recommendation one to five.
You needed to add something to each recommendation.
So if you wanted to add something to each recommendation, you can add that to your sentence or each paragraph that condition on, conditional on severance being approved, whatever you wish, Counselor. Do you have a question with respect to that?
Yes, I'm just referring to...
Go ahead, and I'll go to Counselor Kaiser Nelson while you're working on that.
Thank you. I had a question in regards to point of order process. I just wondered that if we are able to set a condition of severance, since it's Committee of Adjustment that grants a severance, I thought this report just dealt with the streetscape, so I'm just not sure how that...
And I think that's what Counselor Lowry is alluding to, that all this would take place if they are granted their severance from Committee of Adjustment. So he just wants that wording put in there, because we never really put it in here, that it's going to be based on them receiving their, the three severances, yeah.
Thank you for explaining that.
Okay. Principal Planner, did you have a comment on that, or did I pretty much get the gist of it there?
Thank you, Acting Lord Mayor. Through you, the conditions or the recommendations as they were adopted by council were to work with the MHC to establish where that severance line can be, and so that has to happen before an application for severance can be considered. So this is a little bit of a different process, so to make it a condition of severance, I don't think will work. There is supposed to be a meeting with the MHC to establish where the lot line shall be for the existing house at two eighty-nine Ricardo Street, and then the remainder of what is left over will be developed into two lots based on council's direction for two lots. So my sense is, is that we need to work with the MHC first, then they will know where they can make their application for consent, and then following that, there will be other standard conditions for consent that deal with zoning amendments and other such things.
And that will be addressed before it goes to Committee of Adjustment?
Establishing where the lot line would be, yes, that would be addressed before it goes to Committee of Adjustment. The direction last week was to seek some input from the MHC as to where the lot line would be.
Does that clarify it for you, Counselor?
I'm sorry, it doesn't. As I read it here, that the existing dwelling be designated under Part Four of the Ontario Heritage Act, period. It doesn't say about much else on that, so we really voted, you might say, to, why did we do this? And I think it was all as a condition of severance. The whole basis of this was, MHC would have input into this, and that would be forwarded to the Committee of Adjustments. But in effect, if you read it, it says the applicant shall establish an appropriate lot after MHC input. But I believe, and we all got a copy of this from Mr. Richardson, that this was to be based on a condition of severance. The conditions was, MHC would have to be supportive of this. So all I'm saying is, right now, the reading of it looks like we were forcing something to happen, when in fact, it was, the intent was as a condition of severance. And there were several conditions, one of which MHC approval.
And that was, my understanding is that these are all conditions that we have asked them, and they will go to, we are not dealing with the severance, the Committee of Adjustments can deal with that severance. That letter of the six recommendations from Mr. Richardson, it's just that, it's a letter of recommendations. We could have decided to approve all of them or take parts of it. We chose to deal with the recommendations that were put forward to us by our staff. So that's what we dealt with last week, and those are the five recommendations that are based on the reports that were given to us from our staff. Really, there wasn't much that was taken from that, but if you want to make a motion that it be added to each paragraph, you're more than welcome to do that, but my understanding is, Professor Planner, that this will be dealt with through MHC, and that they will decide on the lot lines before it goes to Committee of Adjustments. And I believe that...